Okay, alright, so we'll call the meeting to order at 6:03. I want to let everyone know that this is a remote meeting of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee. Included in that are Michelle Bailey, Julia Campbell, Anaisiezik, Michelle Horrigan, Peter Wolzik, Dana Alara, and David Palito. And we are meeting remotely due to the governor's executive order related to the pandemic. And that this meeting is being recorded. All votes tonight will be made by roll call. And Peter just left. So if we can just be on the lookout for him. Um, he says it won't let him join however.
He's back, I see.
Okay. We see you, Peter, and we saw you before. Can you hear us? Great.
It wouldn't let me join the meeting. It just kept saying, waiting.
Yeah, we saw you. I'm not sure. Okay.
Thank you.
And so, um, it's our intentions tonight to have the public, second public hearing on the school budget. Then, Mary Beth, should we do the winter recognition and, and, and the update first or second or third? You know what I mean?
After the public, public hearing, I would do that next. Yeah.
So we're gonna need to have an agenda change tonight. Um, so we'll do the public hearing on the budget. And then recognizing our student athletes are here online. Um, we'll do the recognition of winter athletics. And an update on the fall to wedge season. And then we are gonna need to go into executive session related to negotiations. And then we will return to open session. We do not anticipate voting tonight on the return to school. Whatever. Plan, um, but know that we're going to be scheduling another meeting next week. Um, where we will give more details about that. Things are on track, but we just have some new information that needs to be processed. And put into the plan before we actually come to a vote on that. Then we'll continue on with our agenda with the budget and with policies. So just know that we'll have that short time period where we are in executive session. And we're still working out the logistics of that, so we'll work on that too. Um, great. So tonight, um, Mary Beth and, um, Vinnie Leoni are going to be presenting our proposed budget for next school year. Uh, they'll make a short, brief presentation and then members of the public will be able to provide us with feedback on that budget. Um, so if one of you want to take it away, that would be great.
Great. Um, Vinnie, you want to put up the slide, slide deck and?
You just have to enable the screen share.
There we go. Sorry about that. Okay, she'll be all set.
Great. Thanks, Vinnie. Um, so what we wanted to do tonight before we, we opened up public hearing is to share a little bit about a couple of issues that we've heard, um, that are concerns about this budget and to provide some additional information to our community. So two issues that have come up is the, the concern that we are, we are not restoring sixth grade world language in this budget. And a concern about with everything happening right now with, um, COVID, with having, um, looking at a plan for next year. Um, trying to do structural changes and moving reading specialists and, and changing them out with instructional coaches. That there's been a question about, is this really the right time to be doing that? Um, so we want to talk a little bit more about that this evening. Um, so that we can share some thinking around that. And then we look forward to hearing your feedback and input. So one of the things that has come up is this question of return to sixth grade world, world language. Um, one of the things we know that was a difficult decision last spring or last June was to eliminate um, six gate, sixth grade world languages from the budget. Um, and that there has been a certainly understandable desire to have that be restored in this budget. Um, given the financial realities that we have been dealing with, we are not able to add the positions that were taken out back into this budget. Um, but what we do believe we see is a, uh, potential pathway forward where the community can really discuss and the, the committee can debate. Um, how they would want to think about world languages. Um, because there is a trade off to having, um, this district offer two um, different languages, Spanish and Mandarin, um, and our ability to staff a sixth grade program. Or, um, do we want to look at the, the thinking around eventually phasing out Mandarin and only having one language? Um, and providing world language at the sixth grade level. So this is a conversation that, that I, I know there's a lot of interest in the community. Um, but that, that discussion, um, would be moved to later this spring to determine which strategy the district would like to, um, move forward with. Um, next slide, Vinnie. The, the other issue that we've definitely heard out there is this question about, you know, does it make sense to move elementary reading specialists? Um, technology specialists out of the library and putting in instructional coaches? What, what's the thinking behind that particularly given the, the challenges that have occurred this year and, um, and the, the structural, making major structural chan- changes at this time? Um, and to that, I, I would offer a couple of points. Um, one is that what we had before, and this is before the 22 positions were eliminated. Um, there was clear evidence that it, it wasn't working as well as it could be. Um, there was a literacy data team established last year to look into this issue and to unpack and try to understand what was happening. Um, the committee voted, um, to look at early literacy intervention as a key district goal this year. Um, MCAS outcomes are not, not what, what would be hoped for, um, and expected from this particular socio, uh, uh, demographic. Um, and that we see a large number of referrals, um, to students to both in district language based programs and to out of district language based programs. So this has provided the, 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 the information to the district that, that this program and what we had in place was not working well. And it was something, you know, as part of my entry plan as I talked to school committee members and, and teachers and administrators that, that I heard a lot about as I entered. Um, next, I want to make it really clear that what we're looking at trying to improve here are system issues. Um, related to teaching and learning structure relating to how we provide intervention. We have remarkable teachers and educators and building administrators. Um, and this is in, these changes are in no way to suggest that, that anybody in a role that's being moved around or a, a conversation about supporting tier one instruction. Um, in any way, shape or form is, is saying that the people that are in these roles are doing nothing less than phenomenal work. Um, but the system itself is not working. This is a system issue. Um, next, I want to say that the model that we put forth, you know, if someone had said to me, design the perfect model, it would not be what's in front of you. Um, but it is the most, um, efficient and impactful model that I believe is possible. Given the budgets constraints that we are working with. Um, the other thing we attempted to achieve in this model is to promote teacher leadership. So you see a lot of teacher leader positions in this. And to avoid new curriculum people coming in with new initiatives, really to build upon the expertise and the, the history of what has been happening here in the district. Um, and then finally, and I'm going to speak a little bit more to this, is that the teaching and learning department is a foundational part of any district. And I, uh, you know, if you are in, um, in Hamilton Wenham, you, you may not necessarily understand what's happening in all districts across the state. So I wanted to talk next a little bit about what we see, um, as a standard really across districts in the state. So in thinking about how to best do that, um, I decided to use what are referred to as the DART districts. These are districts that, um, Desi has identified as being districts that are, are most helpful to compare your district to. That they have enough in common, um, and that these are good comparison districts. So I used those DART districts, any district that was K through 12. So Vinnie, next slide. And what I want to start to show you is I, I basically went on each of these district sites and just looked at central office support for teaching and learning. I didn't even, um, dig down into what was happening at the building base folks. But who's in central office that is paying attention to the teaching and learning and professional development structures that any district needs? This is Groton Dunstable Regional School District. Their curriculum office has an assistant superintendent of curriculum and administrative assistant, a math supervisor K through eight and a link, English language art supervisor, supervisor K through eight. Next district is Hanover Public Schools. They have an assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction. They have a curriculum director and they also have a director of the Office of Family and Community Engagement. Again, these are districts that the DESI has identified as being good comparisons for our district. Next slide. This is Long Meadow Public Schools. You see an assistant superintendent for learning. Next slide. Linfield Public Schools has a director of teaching and learning, curriculum supervisor, supervisors and department heads. Um, 10 people that fill that role. Manchester Essex has an Office of Curriculum Instruction Technology and a director position. Medway Public Schools has an assistant superintendent K for literacy and social studies folks. K five through 12 math curriculum, five through 12 English curriculum. Um, K, K for math curriculum, K for science. So you can see the people that are identified in these roles. North Reading has an assistant superintendent for teaching and learning and an admin assistant associated with that position. Westwood Public Schools has an assistant superintendent of curriculum and assistant to the assistant superintendent and a professional development coordinator. And the Wilmington Public Schools has an elementary language arts leader and assistant superintendent for curriculum and staff development and a data and assessment specialist. Hamilton Wenham has none of these positions. Um, and that as your superintendent, I need to say to you that in order to, for this district to be operational, we need to be able to restore capacity in teaching and learning. Um, and that the budget that has been put forth to you may, puts these positions into place while still trying to deliver a strong intervention model. There are budget realities here around what we, what we can do. Um, and we have presented a budget that we believe provides intervention services for students, restores critical teaching and learning needs. Um, and how, and continues to move forward with teacher leadership and to, uh, grow internal talent in this area. So the, the budget that we have placed, um, in front of you for this evening. Um, Vinnie, I'm actually going to turn it over to you at this point to just kind of walk through these final numbers.
So as Mary Beth said, with all the additions to the curriculum and instruction, um, after the restoration of some positions that we lost in FY21, uh, we're seeing a total operating, uh, budget increase of approximately 3.53% overall. Uh, this is the net assessment that is issued to the towns after we take away all of our revenues from the state uh, and from local receipts. Uh, so what we're left with again is the 3.53% overall. What we are seeing this year is a shift in enrollment towards Hamilton and away from Wenham. So there are more percentages of students residing in Hamilton than there are in Wenham. That's why you see here that Hamilton is actually seeing a bigger increase above the 4.47%. And Wenham is seeing an increase of approximately, approximately 1.86% on the total operating budget. When you combine this with our total debt service, uh, overall, the net assessment going to the towns is just under 4% at 3.99. And year over year, we're seeing an increase of approximately, uh, 1.27 million dollars.
And you have a slide that shows the breakout assessments?
The breakout assessments, uh?
By town? Okay.
Uh, this, this does right here. Hamilton's on the top, Wenham's on the bottom. Are you looking for something different?
Nope, I just didn't see that that's what, thank you.
Yep. And then the third section is the total, just to bulk them, obviously. So I can leave that up just so you can give it a quick look if you want.
Do you want to explain the large? Well, never mind. We'll talk about it later. Not from, it's not the time for me to discuss it. Okay, so we'll have, um, people from the public would like to address this topic, um, speak. Understand that this is the budget hearing. So this is the hearing on, um, just the budget. And then later on in our meeting, after we have the sports and we have the executive session, we'll have the public comments on just general topics. Um, the first and only person that I've seen that would like to be recognized for the budget so far is, um, the chair of the Hamilton Board of Selectmen, Sean Farrell. So if he would like to be, um, pulled over and recognized, that would be great.
Sean, you're all set to speak?
Oh, I guess my son's been on my computer today. I apologize. I could probably talk like this, but I don't.
Oh, my gosh, it's like cat lawyer or kitten lawyer. Did anyone see that?
That's awesome.
All right, let's see if I can fix it here.
That is.
Give me one.
It's amazing.
I love how you're like headless and like.
All right, there we go. All right, my, my apologies for the technical difficulties. Uh, so tonight, just since we've got the budget hearing here, um, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the Hamilton Board of Selectmen. Uh, and just say thank you to the school committee, uh, for adjusting your budget numbers, uh, so that Hamilton will most likely not require an override this year. Um, and we're encouraged that we have had more of a dialogue than we ever had in the past. Uh, and we look forward to more of that collaboration, uh, in the coming years. Um, however, we're still concerned, uh, with the total number, uh, of course. Um, and how it impacts all of our residents during kind of these kind of COVID hard financial times. And, you know, of course, we'd always like the budget number to be lower. The Hamilton Board of Selectmen and the FinCom as well as our Wenham counterparts uh, have expressed concerns about future school committee, future school budgets, uh, requiring overrides uh, since we're so close this year and Wenham was in that territory last year as well. Uh, and we hope we can continue the dialogue about reducing costs and finding efficiencies, uh, within the budget. Uh, and both towns, we see no real dramatic increase in our, uh, revenue streams because we are both, uh, highly residentially um, centered. Um, so, you know, we need to find a way to live within our means and we hope we can continue the dialogue um, between the school committee, the administration and the two towns, FinComs and Board of Selectmen to work together over the next handful of years to keep us all out of override territory. And that's all I really had to say. But thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for listening, Michelle.
Thanks, Sean.
Of the remaining 88 people, um, watching to, uh, wish to speak about next year's budget.
About Jen Carr? Yep.
Hi, John. Great.
Hello. Um, so I was going through your slides. And we're adding, if I added this up correctly, 5.2 curriculum people and instructional people. So that means the only, if, if that math is correct, that means the only two districts from your list that have more instructional people than us is Linfield and Medway. So do we really want to be in the upper third? It, Jen, administration?
Jen, let me respond to that. Just, just so you get a sense of how districts are, are structured. What I pulled was central office administrators. Um, we, we are actually technically the elementary person and half of the, the, the high school person. Um, will fall into central office category, but the positions that we are restoring are building based positions. I didn't get into what the building based positions are in all of those other districts. So you're going to see things like literacy coaches, other types of coaches, reading specialists. All those types of things exist in buildings. Um, but they are not captured in what I showed you on those slides.
But there's still 5.2 administrators and you're taking three teachers out, one from each school, correct?
Not, not, so what is happening, Jen, is we are, we are restructuring teaching positions. These are not administrative positions. Instructional coaches are not administrative positions.
So instructional coaches will be in classrooms teaching?
Instructional class, it, coaches will be working in classrooms with teachers to ensure that our tier one program is as strong and as aligned as it can be. Um, that where students get, where all students get most of their instruction is in that tier one program. And if we do not have that tier one program well aligned and working well and having efforts checking in to see our kids getting what they need in that program and responding to the data that we see in terms of how students are, um, learning, um, in that tier one program. Then that is where we get the biggest bang for our buck. And we, we currently have no capacity in that area. And instead of putting back administrative positions, we put in teacher leadership positions to serve in that capacity. Um, so I really, I want to make a clear distinction between an administrative role and where we are moving to have teacher leaders do this work. The slides that I showed were who is listed as a central office administrators. If you went down, um, into each one of their schools, you would see a lot of these other positions. I, I just simply did not have the time to do that. Um, and that can get confusing in terms of sometimes how they're posted online. This was the easiest way to capture central office. Um, we, we do not have anybody that we are going to have, have an office in central office. We have everybody working in schools, um, as close to the teachers and the students as possible.
Okay, so because I had the numbers of students per classroom in each classroom from my space analysis, we have some classrooms, particularly at Winthrop and, um, some at Cutler too, that were over 20 students. There were some that were at 24 to 26. Now, some of those are bubble years, but we still had an awful lot at 18. So how is taking three classroom teachers and moving them to not being in classrooms, but moving from classroom to classroom going to affect our student to teacher ratio?
So what we are doing is a restructure. So when you see those changes with the library media specialists and the reading specialist, those folks are returning back to classrooms. We're never, we're not changing the number of classroom teachers. But we are changing out instructional code, um, uh, technology folks and one reading specialist for, for the instructional coaches to work on that tier one. Uh, but there will be no, um, decline in the number of classroom teachers, um, that you see from this year. In fact, in this budget, um, there, the seventh kindergarten that was added in later will main, remain. And there is an additional classroom put in for enrollment issues that we anticipate seeing.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
And Jen was the only person that we had remaining who wanted to budget. Your last chance or forever hold your peace, I guess, until town meeting and then you can ask all you want. And, and actually, you actually get the turn to vote. Um, hey, fantastic. So, um, so in our agenda change order, we are going to, um, have the recognition of winter athletes and athletics and, um, an update on the fall to wedge season. Um, so that our students can come and we can, uh, celebrate with them. But they can get back to those joyful things in their lives. If you want to lead this, Craig, that would be great. Oh, I thought we were.
So if I could make a suggestion, um, because I know a lot of the athletes were, were, um, planning on being here at 6:45.
Oh.
So I'm wondering if we might hold public comment now. Um, and then that will give everybody time to arrive, um, in advance.
Great. I didn't know that, but that sounds great. So, um, all right, so let's do that then. So if you are here and you, uh, wanted to speak on something other than the budget, uh, this would be your opportunity. And, um, the policy we follow with this is that each person is allotted three minutes. Um, and that we will recognize you sort of in the order that is here. If, um, the starts to run a long period of time, so more than like, uh, 20 minutes or so, we will, um, ask it that you come to the next meeting. Um, and the first person who would like to be recognized tonight is Lori Bouchard.
Lori, you should be all set.
Okay, can you hear me?
You can, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so I've been digesting the, um, emails and the communication about getting the kids back to school. And I think it's great. I have one hybrid and one full remote. So, um, I think it's a great idea. And I praise the parents who've made this happen. Um, but I'm, I'm concerned about the timing and I'm assuming some of the teachers are also concerned, but I'm just speaking for myself. Um, so if the, if the teachers are getting vaccinated with their first vaccine and then they have to wait the, you know, 21 days or 30 days to get the second one, they're in school on the fifth, which means that they don't have that second vaccine yet. Which, you know, they're only protected with the first one. Then we've added now an extra day, so the first and the second off, which means people are going to take that long weekend. And I'm assuming, assuming some, if not most, are going to go somewhere or at least do something. So then you're coming back on that Monday when potentially people have been exposed, teachers don't have that second vaccine. Then they're in for a week, week and a half with that one day off on the 12th. And then you have school vacation week the following week. So from a health perspective and just from a kind of thinking about this from a logistical spec, perspective. Um, doesn't it make sense to wait after April vacation and start clean, so to speak? The week after April vacation, when teachers at least have the opportunity to have that second vaccine in their system. So at, the timing of it just doesn't make sense. I know we're all hoping to get them back as soon as possible, but you have this opportunity now to sort of help the teachers and support them with their health. And I, I just don't, I don't understand the timing. So anyway, that's just one I wanted to say. Thank you.
Um, so to be recognized is Jack Mulvihill. I know he's a student unless it's his parents that are speaking. Phil Monahan, who is also a student. And Marty Cook, who's also a student, unless it's his father, which then maybe he wants to speak. So bring all of them in and we'll see if any of them would like to comment.
All right, bring all three in at the same time?
Yeah, because I suspect those are all students. But when they get here, we'll find out. And, um, I don't, um, I don't, Amy Landonson, I can't remember your first name. I'm sorry, but if you want to change your first name or just leave it that way, so it's all set for tomorrow for your mom's job, that would be great.
It's Grant.
It's Grant. That's what it is. I was going to say Clark, but I, because I, but I couldn't remember what it was. Clark, Grant, Grant. Okay. Super. Okay.
Okay, our, our three students should be available to speak at this time.
Yeah, so our, um, was Marty Cook really? Marty, the high school student and was, and Phil Monahan is really Phil, the kid? Or is that the?
Yeah, it's, it's me and Ryan.
Great, perfect, okay.
Um, so hi, I'm Ryan Monahan. I'm a senior football captain. And I just want to talk about the situation with fans coming to both home and away games. And so I just basically, I want my parents to be able to come watch me play my last high school football season. Because my parents have supported me ever since I picked up a ball when I was younger. And playing catch with me outside, driving me to practice, buying me all my expensive gear and much more. So as of now, the K-PAN league isn't allowing fans to attend away games, but
Me dunk the basketball behind me?
Middlesex and Patriot leagues are allowing attendance for both home and away games. And currently only at Hamilton, we only have two out of our six games. And that, those are the only games that we are allowing two fans per player. And that isn't even a definite depending on our fielding-like conditions. So we are proposing that Hamilton leads the charge for the Cal to allow away fans to come. And we think that hoping, we're hoping by doing this, not only will they watch their kids play, but also in turn, other districts will follow our lead and open their stands for us. So considering the large decrease in COVID-nineteen cases across Massachusetts, along with newly implemented COVID-nineteen guidelines for both spectators and players, the refusal to allow fans to attend away games outside doesn't really make sense to me. The state has provided guidelines for youth sports and stated that two parents and siblings can attend games. And we've done the space analysis and can find ways to keep it safe for all of us and allow us to have some normalcy back in the season. And I just think it would be a really great opportunity for our parents to come see us for our last seasons. Thank you.
And Marty, did you want to speak also?
Uh, yeah, so, um, basically, yeah, I was going to say similar. I'm a captain this year on the football team and I was supporting the same cause. So I just wanted to say that our parents have really had a tough year, as well as us. And I know everybody has, but, um, I mean, they've stood patient, patiently waiting for our gap season to come about because we always got pushed back from the fall-one slot. And now that our season's finally here, for them to be told that they'd only be watching two out of our six games and to have those two not even guaranteed, that's really a tough thing to hear. Like for them to have to watch from home from their laptops must be crushing, especially considering it's all our last season. And from a player's perspective, we just want to propose just like a way to figure out a way for our families, just like at least two parents to get to games, like away games. And everybody would, like while doing so, would be like respectful about social distancing, mask-wearing, follow guidelines, all that. And I, I just think that hearing those fans on the sideline, it really makes all the difference, even if it's only two per player. And, um, it, it would only, I mean, hundred, hundred fans, fifty fans, whatever it is. I mean, just having our parents there to watch our final season, it would really make such a difference. And, um, it would be just great to have them there to support us.
Great, thank you. And are either of you staying for the athlete recognition from the winter?
Yes, I am.
Yeah.
Perfect. I figured this. So, all right, um. Well, we got six minutes to kill. Anybody want to talk?
Michelle, John, Mulvihill still has his kind of.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize. Sorry, John.
Yeah, hey, everyone. I'm Jack Mulvihill. I'm a senior football captain like Ryan and Marty or at Hamilton. And I personally, I'm very bummed out to hear that we're not allowing fans, especially our parents, to attend these away games. Because personally, I know when my parents took this news, they were very upset. And they talked to a bunch of other parents around the community and they were all very deeply upset about this news. And even if we just push forward to having at least two or like a couple of parents socially distanced and following COVID protocols at these games would really mean a lot, especially for our shortened senior season. And would just mean the world.
Thanks, Jack. Okay, um.
And Michelle, I've noticed that Craig is, has joined us, so he may be able to indicate if he would be ready to start the conversation or, or if all of his athletes are here, if we need to wait just a little bit longer.
Yeah. Can you see, Craig, if you look under the panelist, if everybody you expect to be here is here? Or if you look over the, in the attendees. DL, I'm not sure who you are, but if you could change your name to be a real person, we could recognize you still. Or I?
Is there, is there a way to explain how to change the name?
Well, I'm, I think the chat is still open as well while they went away. So maybe they didn't really mean to have their hand raised.
So we had said for the student-athlete six forty-five, uh, some of them are here. They're not all here, but we have about half.
Um, would you like to talk about the wedge season first?
Yes, and maybe we can leave the, the discussion regarding fans at our field and, and at other fields till after. But in, in short, the four sports that we could possibly have run were football, volleyball, indoor track, and cheerleading. We did not have enough participants for cheerleading or indoor track. I think, I think that was because the way those seasons were constructed, while people are, are doing their very best to get some kind of activity in for those two sports, you know, indoor track was going to be five weeks of practice inside and a few meets outdoors in a couple of weeks in the beginning of April. And I think that our indoor track athletes just preferred frankly to wait for the spring. We did have about eight kids that were really bummed out and that stinks. And we had a couple cheerleaders signed up. We do have with cheerleading, we have a co-op with Penguin Hall. They elected to have their athletic seasons continue to be in the traditional three-sport model. So if those athletes had cheered with us, they wouldn't have been able to play in their spring sport because of the way their school structure runs. So we are running football and volleyball. And that's kind of like the high level. Volleyball's having their first game now. Sorry for being late, running back and forth from my office to the gym. And football has their first game on, on Friday night. So that's the high-level stuff without the fan piece.
Super.
We do have, I'm very happy to report, a lot of students that had never played volleyball or football because this is a unique season and they weren't necessarily missing other sports, decided to try it. And our numbers for both programs are way up. And we love to see that. We had to add a level of volleyball. So we have three levels of volleyball, which is wonderful. And we have more kids on the football team than we've had in a while. So it's exciting to have kids out and just being active, as was said from the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I've often said that in my freshman sophomore year, my, well, the roof fell in on my school. So we ended up having to go from noon to six P M. and share another building with another school. But athletics practiced in the morning and theater happened at night. And so you had football players for the very first time able to participate in a play. And they always were like, I never had that chance before. And so it was kind of a unique opportunity, like you, things that were bad can still have that are good. You know, it's like Cal maneuver kind of bad, but it makes things that are good. So it's, it's all.
Awesome, awesome stuff.
So, um, great. So what do you think?
I, I think we can rock and roll.
Right.
Five.
Super. Who do you want to start with, Craig?
Uh, so I'll go, if that's okay with everybody, I'll go team by team to sort of keep it organized. You know, we said at the beginning of the year to our coaches in our first coaches' meeting, and we have one with us here today. This, this year, every year is about the student-athlete experience. There's no question about that. This year, it's never been more true. We are going to honor some student-athletes this evening. Every single one that played, everyone that coached, they finished their seasons. It was, it was bumpy at times. And people had a lot of anxiety, but parents, coaches, players all found a way to make it happen at the end. And I think what all these student-athletes, why they're great is they're representative of their teammates, right? They're here and we're acknowledging them. But I think it's important to recognize that everybody that played and finished really deserves kudos. But we'll start, we'll just go through all the teams. The girls' swim captains who are here, girl swim and dive captains were Abby Hogan, Taylor Massimi, and Linaya Sheniker. And if I'm probably saying that wrong sometimes, I apologize, but they were the captains of the girl swim team. So congratulations to you. Riley Reader was the girl, was our girl swim team first-team All-Star. The way swim works is it's not vote-based, it's merit-based. So if you come in first place in your event in the league meet, which this year was virtual, you get first-team All-Star. So, um, you know, the votes are nice, but it's, you know, swim has a nice deal going where if you win, you know, it's, it's based purely on merit and how you do. For boys swimming, the captains were, Ryan Luau was a captain. And he was also a first-team All-Star along with our dot, for the second year in a row, at least second year in a row, it might be third year in a row. Micah Katz was the Cal Diver of the Year. Last year during the state tournament, he went very, very deep into the sectionals and state tournament. We didn't have that opportunity this year, but I know he's looking forward to his senior year next year and going to do great, great things. The next person that I'd like to acknowledge is a girls' hockey player that plays as a guest in our co-op with Marblehead High School. The co-op's about five years old, maybe six or around there. And she was our first captain, the first captain from Hamilton, and that's Mackenzie Walls. The Northeast, so congratulations, Mackenzie. She probably would have been a All-Star. The Northeast Conference didn't, it's because it's Marblehead's team, it's the Northeast Conference, they didn't have All-Stars. I'm very confident that had, that had, you know, they done that, she would have been one because she was an outstanding leader on and off the ice for that team. So congratulations, Mackenzie. That's tremendous stuff. Boys hockey had three captains this year. You know, and, and similar to girls hockey, there was, you know, hockey was a tough sport to get through because you're in that fishbowl. And, you know, our, our girls' hockey team did this this year and our boys' hockey team did too. You know, they, they're on the ice before six A.M. every day. And, you know, the, the, I think just, if you think about waking up at, at about five o'clock and rushing out of the house and getting dressed outside when it's ten degrees because you're not allowed to get changed inside and all that comes with that, it's an incredible, it's an incredible effort to do that. And so, you know, whether it's girls' hockey at Marblehead or our boys' hockey, you know, that, that kind of needs to be acknowledged. So the boys' hockey captains were Colby Guyer, Jack Stewart, and Luke McClintock. And then, you know, three awesome kids that have been with us for four years. And our first-team All-Star was Grant, was Grant Landon, our goalie. This was our first full-time venture into the K-PAN league, usually where an independent team. And, you know, I think we did well, but, you know, Grant was a rock star all year and really kept us in a lot of games. The next team we'd like to acknowledge the three captains of is the girls' basketball team. They, um, they won the, the, the Cal Basketball League, voted them for the Team Sportsmanship Award. And it was incredibly well-deserving. You know, we may not have had the best year on the court, although we won some games and competed very hard in others. We have a relatively young team, but we had three captains that really set the tone for our younger players and we were very lucky to have them. And that was Olivia Baker, Sarah Cook, and Kaylee Whalen. You know, the, this, the year started for them a little slow in terms of on-court stuff, but they really picked it up at the end. And I think it's the wonderful, wonderful explanation of who they are that every other team in the league voted them for League Sportsmanship Awards. Wonderful stuff. The next team won their, won a league title for the third year in a row. And not a lot of people know about it and, but they were in the paper. They did have two Salem All-Stars named today and that was really fun. Uh, and that's our gymnastics team that competes. And this year we had all Hamilton, when I'm athletes, sometimes we, well, we do co-op with Manchester, but this year they didn't send us any student athletes. It was all our, it was all our kids and students. And it's the fourth year in a row that they won the league and I think it's the third year in a row that they were undefeated. And they, and, you know, in gymnastics, it's really just about your team score. It's not really about the competition, so how you can go. And every, they were never worried about winning and losing every time I was there and, you know, watching them do their thing. And I will have to say, I'm going to slow down, I will say with, when I watch gymnastics, I definitely channel my mother. And when they're doing the scary things, I go like this and I get really nervous. But every time they were rock stars and landed their stunts and, I mean, you know, just think about walking on that beam thing. Like I'd let fall and crack my head open. I don't know how they do that. They're wonderful, wonderful athletes. And, um, and so, uh, one of the athletes is actually out on the volleyball court right now during a thing out there. But the two captains of the league champion, fourth-year-in-a-row gymnastics team were Abby Benak and Audrey Fusco. So congratulations to you, awesome people. It, it, it really is like, yeah, it, it's like going over there and watching them at Iron Rail is it, where they've come from for where they are over the last few years, it's utterly remarkable, the stunts they can do and all the things. I don't even, I couldn't even fathom it. And the last team we're going to acknowledge had some individual and team awards. The boys' basketball team won the K-PAN league for the tenth time in the last twelve years. So quite an accomplishment there. You know, they, they had a, a strong finish at the end. They also, there was, um, like a league postseason tournament that was sort of just for bragging rights and we won that as well. It was the Cal versus Cancer Tournament. The captains for basketball were Carter Coffey and Ryan Hutchinson. And they were outstanding all year, very strong performers. They were kind of like, you know, and there's some other people I'm going to mention in a second because those two, along with Ryan Monahan, were first-team All-Stars. And Ryan was also the league MVP. And he's one of the young men that spoke earlier this evening. And, you know, the, the fun thing about that team this year, when, you know, watching them was every night it was someone different, right? There were even other players we're not mentioning now that every night there was someone that dropped fifteen points and had ten rebounds. And then someone else would have a struggling shooting night or, you know, not, not necessarily been on their A-game. And other people would just catch on and step up. And that's really the mark of a great team. Coach Mike DiMarino is here. I don't know how many, I think he's been with us six years and won the Coach of the Year five times. He was a statewide Coach of the Year last year. And, you know, and Mike and I talk a lot during the season. And, you know, we, we had a, we came off of a paused COVID week, practiced one or two days and went up against the Practiced one or two days and went up against the heart, you know, probably what was considered the best team in the league and they were undefeated. I don't think they lost a game all year. And you know, with one day practice basically in a walk. Uh, so with basically one day practice, they took that team all the way to the last couple of minutes. And then, you know, we won a bunch of games at the end of the year. So. Um, you know, that, I don't want it to seem like I'm flying through these. I'm conscious of our time and. The time that the student athletes took to be with us and Coach Di Marino and their parents, but. You're all incredible human beings and we're incredibly grateful for you. And what, you know, a lot of you are seniors. And the leg, the, the kind of big time legacies that you leave may not have been this year. It's probably going to be. Felt in full seasons to come that you didn't get to experience. But the way you approached this year was, is gonna make our programs better in the future because of the influence you had on our younger athletes. So. To all of you, thank you from the bottom of our heart.
If you are a senior and, um, would like to take your moment. And say something, you are welcome to do that now. If you could just raise your hand so we can. Well, actually you're all here, so you don't need to raise your hand. You just have to unmute yourself.
Don't, don't be shy. This is your moment here. They're all shy.
Well, I can speak up for a moment. I mean, um, I've been here in, for six years and truly. Um, feel blessed to be a part of the Hamilton Wyndham community, uh, working for, uh, working with. Uh, Craig has been a pleasure year in, year out. Moreover, working with, um, Ryan Cotter. And Ryan, uh, for the last three years has been truly a pleasure and, and all the kids here. I mean, this. We, I mean, from administration and parents and school committee and. The players and coaches, it's just, it's a pleasure to work with and, you know, I think that's. That's no small part of why we've been able to build such a successful culture here. So I just, I wanted to, before we say goodbye, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for giving me this opportunity. I'm, I'm thankful every day. Thank you very much and thank you to the kids for everything you do for us here in and year out.
I should add, Linnea, uh, was also a Cal Dive Champ of the Year. I did have that. I did miss that. I had that, uh, she was a captain, but she was also an All-Star and Cal Dive Champ. So I'm sorry, Linnea, my bad on that.
Yeah, that is. Something to watch too. You're like, oh my gosh, I can't, they're, they're not Olympians, but they are. Pretty darn good for the pool, you know? So, great, so well.
Uh, e- e- even though those, uh. Seniors were, were quiet here when they had their time to shine. Um, I don't mind speaking up for them, uh, those that spoke before this. And, um, reiterate from a school committee perspective that I believe we should. Um, look to opening up our sp- spectators, you know, from a district policy to, um. Point to, in order for, you know, these guys to actually be able to finish off the rest of their senior year strong in all their sports and let their parents. Um, and you know, fans, you know, attend their games. So, um. You know, I didn't want to make that motion earlier, but I definitely want to bring that up now before we move on any further. Excuse me. So Craig, I, I can't see Tom here, but Craig, I'm curious to, um, you know, your perspective on that.
So.
Up first and then.
Well, you, you said that I'm actually. You know, w- we said we were gonna do, discuss this, um, when we talked about the gap season and, and, and we didn't, so.
We just didn't have enough time. We were waiting. It was a little bit early and we had told kids six forty-five, so. We just started knowing that we would follow up with the fan thing as soon as we finished the kid part, I think. Unless I'm wrong.
Alright, so I guess with that, we would, um, thank all of you for managing to. Get in one more Zoom today. I know it was your remote day, so we appreciate that and we are excited that. You still were able to participate in these things, knowing that last spring, a lot of. Those sports, they were not, we're glad that you got the opportunity to get some real. You know, team spirit and, um, athletic opportunities. So congratulations to all of you. For those that we will not be seeing in the spring or possibly again. Um, best wishes on the endeavors as you would leave our district as well. So thank you very much. And if you want to stay on while, uh, Mr. Genualdo talks about, um. The Cape Ann League's, um, decision around away games, you are welcome to. And if that, if that's not something that you're interested in, you're welcome also to just, um, leave. So we appreciate it.
Um, a- at the. S- so to answer Dave's question to kind of jump in, I do have, um, a five-minute slide deck presentation. And I, I'm very conscious of your time and, but when I, I've had. Um, probably the same conversation fourteen or fifteen times that takes about a half hour to forty-five minutes with all our constituents. I feel like if you allow me the five, six-minute screen presentation, it's going to clear up a number of. Things that are frankly misinformation, tell you where we actually are instead of where we're perceived to be and how we plan to move forward. Um, and then I would welcome, you know, questions certainly at the end of that. So I don't know if that's okay or not.
Yep, that sounds great. Part of your update.
And Craig, you should be all set to share.
Thank you. Oh dear, uh, I just did the wrong thing. Um, what am I doing wrong? What am I doing wrong? Oh, I'm silly. Sorry, silly me. I, I was looking in the slide deck. I apologize. Okay, is that, is that better? You see it up there?
We do, thank you. And if you want to present, we'll be able to see it easier.
Okay, yep, good, good, good idea. Okay, so. First off, I apologize for this being very rudimentary. The information in it is not rudimentary. It's very well researched, but. The way it looks is not how I would like it if I had more time. So I apologize for that in advance. The first thing to understand. I- and this is probably the single biggest piece of misinformation that's out there. I frankly don't know where this came from. Is that the Cape Ann League Athletic Directors and the Cape Ann League in general. Absolutely did not unilaterally vote to have no fans at away games. That is simply untrue. Um, what did happen, it was discussed, it, we used to have monthly in-person meetings. We now have. Weekly meetings. And I can tell you that this topic of conversation comes up every meeting. We talk about it, uh, quite a bit. And what was talked about at the league was that each district. Had to make the best choice for them. In whatever method they chose to make it. So for some, that meant the Board of Health had the final say. For some, the school committee wanted to vote. For some, the athletic director, principal, facility person made the decision. And the reason why everybody was different was because everybody has a unique situation. Everybody's stadium size is different. Everybody's size of the football team is different. Some have bands, some have cheerleaders. There was some information out there that, well, this league is having away fans. Why can't we? Well, if the stadium is six times the size of ours, that's part of the reason. Um. Because here's, people are, are giving. Part of the information regarding what we have to adhere to and it's important that we. Definitively state what is actually all the information. And what the state of Massachusetts, the E E A, the M I A A and D E C are all in agreement. And the key phrase here is up to. You can have up to fifty percent capacity. You can have up to two adult household chaperones, because not everybody lives with parents and household siblings. But all must be masked and all must be six feet apart. Okay, the six feet apart thing, as you'll see in a second. Means there is a finite amount of space with the people that can fit. At anyone's football stadium. Some are bigger, some are smaller. Okay, the local board of health is allowed to be more strict than any of these. And I spoke with someone who said they have a meeting tomorrow night and this is going to be discussed to see if there's any last. Um. Kind of guideline that we have to follow. But please understand what I'm, what I'm presenting here because it's the foundation of everything going forward and it clears up. Quite a bit of misinformation that frankly is out there and, you know, just needs to be out there and talked about more. Um, and again, the six feet spacing rule is critical in understanding our school. This is not a, this is not a, a, um. A first-class picture, but it's what we got. So I broke our stadium field down into several sections. With A being the home bleachers. B being the opponent's bleachers. C being the end zone on the scoreboard side. D being the end zone on the opponent, uh, away from the scoreboard, the opposite side. E being the home sideline in two sections, both on the track here. And then this section E is kind of like from midfield on the walkway down toward the back. F being a similar spot. Not on the track, but in front of the stands, kind of down here behind the ropes, if you will, for those that have been to the stadium. And these purple lines represent where the football teams are going to be standing. Generally, the football team stands between the twenty-five yard lines between, say, here. And here, because you can be all bunched up and they usually go up to as close to the sideline as you can. And Dave, you can, you can appreciate this because you coach youth football. There's always a coach that has to yell, get back, because the kids are all bunched up way up here, right? This year, the football teams, because they have to be spread out, are going to go a lot further down the sidelines. And they have to be back on the track because they can't be close to the field because the coaches and referees are going to be up here. And the kids have to be at least six feet away from them. So this is kind of, so, and if anyone's like dizzy and confused, this over here in the corner is where you walk in. And then this is the project adventure field, et cetera. So going with that as our. As our, uh, kind of baseline, we said there's a finite number of seats. In the home bleachers, you can only fit between twenty, uh, between thirty-five and forty people. In the away bleachers, you can only fit forty-five to fifty. The stickers are already down there. Tom and I did them in the fall. Tom did a very professional digitally enhanced map of where the dots would go. And the custodians myself went out and took time to put them down. The end zone, if you sit in the end zone, if you stand in the end zone or someone wants to bring a lawn chair. Football fields are fifty-five yards wide, which means you can fit twenty-seven people going across here. Per row. Same thing on the other side, okay? Now. If you wanted to put people twelve feet behind each other. Where the team could be down here, we can discuss that. So there's, the number of rows is basically just how deep you want to sit with no elevation and not being able to see anything. Um, the home sideline, I said you could potentially put people here. Again, in front of the stands, behind the track, behind the rope. If you start at the fifty-yard line and went down, you could fit about twenty-five spaces worth of people. So may ask, well, use the whole field. Well, I would like personally to be safe and keep the exit access on both sides out of the stadium free. Because as people come in. If you allow them to, if you allow people to stand here, people like to see each other and talk. They're going to bunch up. They're going to group together. So if we. Kind of keep this open for egress or access, or whatever you want to call it. You can fit twenty-five in each of these E and F station and E, E and F spaces. So with one row of bleach, with one row, you're talking about anywhere between a hundred and eighty-four to a hundred and ninety-four spaces or seats. Two rows, three rows, okay? My question that can't be answered here and I've, and I've been. Uh, I believe that intentions of everybody are best. Within our parents that, no, no, we'll, we're not going to bunch up. We're going to stay six feet apart. We're not going to gather. We'll, we'll stand wherever you tell us. That works until you're in this spot or one of these spots and you can't see. Uh, if you're there, that, in my opinion, the tendency might be to try to get closer. And then, you know, if people wanted to, if we did do these rows over here, people could bring their own lawn chairs if they choose. So knowing that we are space limitations, let's talk about the people that ethically I feel like we have to invite. We have about fifty football players. So I think what, what we've said is for our home is that we're going to invite. Two, two household. Adult chaperones or parents for every player. Now, no other sport. And, and no other sport this year has been granted anything close to that, especially in the beginning. Um, it took three or four games of no fans in the fall for soccer and field hockey to eventually have fans. Basketball and, and ice hockey, I get her inside. They had a couple of games with just parents each. So we're inviting up to a hundred football parents. We have forty band members that are allowed to play outside us as far as six feet each. Our band members are our students. They have a right to this event, just like anybody else. It would be my inclination. Well, so, uh, well, I'll, I'll get to that in a minute. If you invite up to a hundred football parents, I don't think eighty band parents would go. I feel ethically obligated to include them in our invitation list. I don't think they would all go. And if they didn't, maybe that makes room for whatever. And then the other group that we'd like to invite is a poet that I think maybe we can pull off. Maybe is opposing senior parents. I don't think we can invite a team of sixty people, given our space limitations. I mean, the numbers are right here. These are our limitations based on the six feet guideline. Right here, because the band has to sit somewhere. You're talking about two hundred and twenty people just out of here before. You're getting anywhere near opposing a parents. So if we're at two twenty, we're somewhere where we're using two rows on both sides. And. How many, another team has fifteen, sixteen seniors? It's another thirty people. So now you're talking two fifty, you're pushing this third row. Situation. Okay, so my suggestion. And, uh, you know, again, crunching numbers or whatever is I would, it's my inclination to put the student band in the home bleachers. There are students. I think it's their activity as well. And I'm not trying to be insensitive. I feel like they have a right to sit in the home bleachers. On the opposing side bleachers, you could fit our, the parents of our seniors in about half of our junior parents. And again, where, where we wind up sitting is different. I'm just trying to paint a picture for you. In the end zone on the scoreboard side. If we did one row, you could fit parents of juniors and most sophomores. If you did the end zone opposite, the front row could be the remaining sophomores and ninth grade parents. And perhaps parents of the bands could sit in two rows over here. Um. On this home sideline, maybe you could fit the remaining band parents if they wanted to come. And maybe we have this, we have this F section here. To maybe fit twenty-five or thirty parents of an opposing team, maybe. And again, they're going to be obstructed view. They're going to have to look over and through the, the, the huge massive wall of kids. But we might be able to figure that out. Um, and that's, I'm going to stop my share because that's the research we've done. Those are raw numbers. That's our space. Um, and those are the narratives cleared up. And so I'm, I would welcome any questions that we have.
Thank you, thank you, Craig. So, um. Are you making a recommendation for us or are you, do, do, I mean, we don't really. I mean, it, to me, it seems an operational issue, but.
So, so here's my, so I, we need to wait and see what the Board of Health says. Okay, first, and because they may have additional guidelines that I'm unaware of.
Okay.
Assuming they don't have additional guidelines, this is a recommendation. No, you don't need to vote, but. You know, like, uh. This is probably just too honest, like of me and, and maybe not as, as. I don't want to say professional, but. There's not a lot of people, the, the boosters have said they'd help and I agree with them. They want this so bad. I think they'll do anything. I think we want to say, look, maybe we can do, maybe we can't do everybody, maybe we can do seniors. But what I'm concerned about is that. All year we've operated on cautious, like, let's have some progress, but let's be cautious and safe and smart. If we let everybody in. And we have five hundred people at our game. And there's no school committee vote and it's up to me or Eric or Tom. And five people come down with COVID. Or there's a contact issue. That's my behind. And, and, and I'm being raw about that. I'm being honest about that. It's like, I understand it's on me and some others, but. It's, it's an athletic event and it's all fine and dandy until it's not. And so my plan is what I laid out for you with opposing seniors and that's my. You know, one, one line of seats on one side, the other line of seats on the other side. Or a couple, if you include the band parents, that's my recommendation, but. You know, if, if the school committee isn't comfortable with that, I need to know that because if something goes sideways. You know, like it. I feel uncomfortable being the only one making that decision.
Yeah, the one thing you did not address is contract tracing. How will that happen or what's required?
Yep, so, um, everybody that, and so we just did it tonight. Volleyball, we did it when the senior parents did come at the away events. We did it all fall. Volleyball, we did it when the senior parents did come at the away events. We did it all fall. Um, it, there'll be a, uh, it's listed by player name or in this case band name. And then, um, I probably shouldn't show them because it's public. But, but it has player name and it has parent name with parent contact. And we have people at both gates and they both have a highlighter. And when the parents walk in, their name gets highlighted off. And so we do content, so we would be contact tracing everybody. We may not know where they're sitting exactly. You know, we can suggest where people can sit so they can fit. I, I, I can't run around and make, you know, I'm worried about the kids on the field. I, I, I can't worry about where, like people are sitting if they're not in the right section. So I, I could tell who's in the stadium. I'd have no control over where they actually sat and who they sat next to.
So if there was some parent in the community, how would we find out? Like, how would that even be contact traced back, I guess, would be?
So the,
if it's past COVID. Would that be?
Yep. If, if we would hear it through the Board of Health, if somebody became positive, they would have the interview of who have you been around? What have you done? Oh, I was at the Hamilton Winham football game. What section did you sit in? Uh, I was in the away, I was in the away bleachers. Who else was around you? I have no idea. So then, like, to say exact, like, I don't know what the Board of Health would do. Would they just call everybody that was there as a fan of close contact? Would they try to determine who was around people in the bleachers? I don't have an answer to that. I don't know.
Okay.
We could get them who was there at the stadium, but not where they were sitting.
Mary Beth has something she wants to say and David has a question.
Yeah, I, I was gonna just also invite Eric to speak, Principal Tracy, to get his perspective from the high school principal. Um, piece, you know, one of the things that I know both from talking to Craig and, um, to Principal Tracy is that I think we all share the same goal of trying to get students to have a athletic experience that is as, as, as viable and as engaging as possible. Um, and as you heard this evening, there are numerous, um, operational challenges that we have to be aware of. So one of the ways that the committee could decide to proceed, because I, I appreciate Craig's, Craig's comment that it's hard to be out there as the sole voice a- around this, as the sole decision maker, but another approach that the committee could take is to, um, to formally say that they will leave this decision um, to the athletic director and to the high school principal as they look at the numerous, um, operational issues associated with it, knowing that, that we all have the same goal and they're trying to figure out how to do this well. Um, so I wanted to put that out there as another possibility for the committee and then just check in and see Principal Tracy, if you have anything you'd like to add.
Sure. Thank you very much. I really, um, first of all, I want to say thank you to Craig for, for really working this whole thing out, but he's been doing this all year. He's been doing this since last August, trying to figure out the numbers, who's going where. We've kind of been through this before at a smaller scale with soccer, so we have some experience with it and we understand what needs to be done. Um, and, and certainly Craig's not standing alone. I will be standing there with him. I don't, I, I, you know, there's, there's opportunities for kids. I'm a former football player. I'm a former, you know, high school athlete, college athlete. I, I love a high school sports game, any competition as much as the next person and want to see people there. I get that. I understand how those kids feel playing, you know, the, you look back and say, oh, you're playing on an empty field versus you're playing with some cheers behind you or that band behind you or, you know, somebody to be there and, and, and give you that extra push when you need it. And I think that's important. I think we focused on social emotional issues with our kids um, all year and, and athletics and, you know, those, those extracurricular activities help us to keep kids a little bit more balanced than they would be otherwise. And I think it's, it's a, you know, it's still, I would ask that you trust us to, to make this, you know, these things happen. We, we have, uh, a re- pretty strong knowledge of how things worked out in the fall. We know where people you know, kind of follow the rules and where they refuse to follow the rules. We know what kind of supports, you know, we have and didn't have and, and, you know, we, we really do spend a lot of time trying to work these details out. We're not trying to take anything away from our kids or our families. Um, you know, we, we, I talk with the principals of the Cal League once a week. We, again, talked yesterday a little bit more about, you know, where people are at. So that may shift in, in other areas. We don't have any control of the other uh, districts, no matter what we do. So, you know, we're focused, we'll focus on, on us and focus on what we, the best things we can do for our kids. We have some time for home games. You know, our home games aren't until really the first week in April, first two weeks in April, I believe. So we have also some time and there is speculation and rumor out there that may, our March twenty-second, there may be new guidance coming out for, from the state related to things like sporting events. So uh, we're, we're trying to take into account and make all those things functional for our kids, you know, that, that's why I do this job. That's why Craig does this job and, and I would just ask that you trust us to do that. And, and, you know, I understand it's, it's loud. It's been loud all year. You know, when things happen, a group comes, surfaces and another group, when we get that, I understand how that works. Um, but we, we really, I think, you know, talking to Craig, I think we're confident in what we can do and what we can make happen. And we'll have to take advantage of things like, like booster parents or, or others to, to help us to to kind of keep things in place so that we can, if called upon, say, oh, these parents were over here in this section, at least to, to be able to isolate those things. But, but as Craig said, we sure, we sure don't want to have um, something blow up on us and, and, you know, and possibly stop a game or shut down part of the season like we experienced in the fall. So we, we're trying to, to learn from the experiences we had in the, in the fall and in the winter sports and continue to, to give our kids opportunities um, to give them that balance as we, as we move towards the spring.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Um, we know you're always all about the kids, so we appreciate that. David?
Hey, thanks. Um, thanks, guys. You know, I, I think it's important, I, I think you both know and, and most people here know that another uh, role I play in the community is on the, um, Hamilton Little League Board where we actually successfully, um, held two seasons with spectators over the summer and fall of last year. Um, so, you know, we've already been through this, um, you know, ourselves and, and sort of the problem solving and working in conjunction with, um, both towns Board of Health in doing so and, and founded a really, uh, you know, collaborative, easy, easy sort of process and, um, you know, and, 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 and I could tell you because we ran, you know, um, leagues from four years old to fourteen years old. So the, the, you know, um, trying to, you know, get four-year-olds to apply to six-foot, you know, um, social distancing guidelines, uh, in the middle of a, uh, T-ball game is, is, is quite, quite the feat. So, I mean, I understand that. You know, and that being said, you know, a- as we sit there and we look at those numbers, we're, we're looking at those numbers and those, those positions as, uh, you know, just raw data um, based on square footage, right? So the, the reality is if you go in from a, go in with the family to watch your son play football or your daughter, um, eh, your, you know, the P, the group you're going with is separated by six feet, right? So that, that's actually changing sort of the li- the layout of how people are going to be grouped in the stands. Um, and, you know, that actually ends up sort of making things a little bit more favorable. I don't think anyone, well, you know, that's actually really hard to say because I was going to say, you know, that there are a lot of people in, most people I think are very respectful of what's going on, right? And if we were to open up sort of these guidelines to that sort of third row number that you know, most people in the community, as much as I'd love to go see, you know, um, you know, Marty Cook plays last, I mean, he's my neighbor, so, you know, play one of his last games. I respectfully not go you know, as to not be, be, you know, take up a seat of somebody's family, right? Um, and, and it would hope that that would sort of go, you know, go without being said, uh, I, I, to sort of con- you know, contradict Mary Beth a little bit, I think it's actually really important for the school committee to say something tonight. So Craig and Eric, you aren't standing there alone, holding the bag. Right? I, I, and, and I say that not in sort of, uh, we're telling you what to do. I think that we need to sort of make a stand and say that we do support you in that, you know, no matter what, what goes on, um, you know, that we're, that you're, again, you're not just sitting there left holding the bag um, i- in, in any sort of worst-case scenario, you know, God forbid that there is someone, um, that tests positive after attending a game. Um, the, the, those are my thought processes and why I think it's important for the school committee to get involved, right? Just so we can say, and, you know, we can vote in, in support of, you know, obviously you guys making the ultimate decision, but in saying that we, you know, are entrusting you with that decision and we do, you know, you know, stand by you and support you to make sure that, you know, it is not your bottom line and that, you know, that, that we, we are, uh, wholeheartedly entrusting you with, with this decision and want to support you in it.
Anna?
Thanks, Michelle. Um, thank you, Craig and Eric and everyone for the update. I have a couple, um, just a couple of questions and a couple of comments. So Craig, as I'm listening to your presentation, it sounds as though we as a district only have authority for our fields. We have no say on what any other town or district is saying. Is that correct? I see lots of nodding.
Ultimately, absolutely, that's correct. I think, like, if we, like, if, if, if I go to the athletic meeting on, you know, the end of this week or whatever and say, you know, we're going to try this, maybe you can talk about trying that. We can throw it out there, but we have absolutely.
But there's no, but, but again, this is the, the thing you're dispelling is the idea that there was a league decision and there's something, it sounds like it's all individual jurisdiction. Be- so if that's true, sounds like it is, it sounds like a lot of the students that spoke were not as concerned about fans at our games, but they were advocating for fans at other venues. And it sounds like we don't really have a ton of control over that. That said, it sounds like we could make a statement or encouragement or something, but we, we don't really have any jurisdiction over what happens at other fields. So, okay, I just want to clarify that. I guess, um, my question is, you know, the new guidance came up from the state in regard to indoor spaces. It's so unequivocally clear about three feet, three feet, three feet inside. Do you anticipate that the state will make a change about outdoor sporting events? Because to me, that is just a a painful contradiction that they're saying all the kids could go inside at three feet, but we can't even have football fans outside at six feet. Do, are we gonna, I mean, do we have hope the state's going to recognize that kind of idiotic hypocrisy of that, for lack of other words?
No, yeah, a- and I think it's a timing issue and part of the, the, the the very real anxiety about the play, from the players and parents is that the season is so short and starting now. We do anticipate new guidance on March twenty-second, which is before the, the April fifth comeback day. Right? So, so like, eh, on March twenty-second, we think they're going to open a lot up. We're going to go into phase four and there'll, there'll still be something going on, but it won't nearly be what it is now. And that would be like before the inside three-feet thing. It's just the way it's being and like the timing of, of the announcement, not necessarily the timing of the implementation, I think, is what's.
Yeah. Okay. So my last couple, couple of thoughts. I, um, I fully agree with David that I want you and Eric to know that the school committee, you know, unless you do something truly negligent and reckless, which I don't think you're capable of doing. Like, I do have faith, like, I think we need to publicly say, unless you're negligent, at which point I will be very upset with you, we have your back, you know, like, I think that's important as a concept to say that out loud. Um, and I personally really want to support getting parents there as much as possible. And on that note, I'm noticing that while we've been talking, a few other parents who I know are are football boosters and are supportive, have raised their hands to speak. I know we've had our public comment period is a little choppy today, so I don't know if it's possible to recognize either the Cooks or, or I think it's Chris, Kristen Monahan wants to say something. I don't know if we can come back to them, but I just wanted to find out that they've raised their hands and I think they might have something they want to say on this topic. That's it.
Yeah, Mary Beth Ting has mentioned something in the Q and A. I'm sorry, I meant to say that earlier. I think that's important, too.
Anna?
Um, if it's appropriate, I, I, and I'm mindful of everyone's, um, I, I, I understand that people are wanting to speak, but if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion so that we could, um, i- if that's appropriate, I think that we can craft a motion that will, I mean, would that be appropriate at this moment? Right. I'm, I'm going to do my best and before anybody seconds it, we can make sure that it's what we really want for the motion. Um, so I move that we, as the Hamilton Winham Regional School Committee, uh, empower and support, uh, Craig Genualdo and Eric Tracy in making operational decisions regarding fans at, uh, sporting events during this current sporting season.
You include students? Fans and students?
Oh, and students, who could be fans also.
Great. Is there a second?
I, I, I would just wonder if, uh, this season, the remaining seasons for the would, would make more sense.
All right. This is the end for the remaining, uh, twenty, 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 twenty-one school year.
I'm going to second for that.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Great, David. Thank you. Um,
Can I?
Yep.
Can I move to vote?
Yeah. There was something wickedly important I wanted to say, but I can't remember it. So if you would like to move to vote, we can.
I would like to move to vote.
Okay, super. Um, David?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Al Horgan?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Mel Bailey? Yes. Thank you, Craig, and thank you, Eric.
Thank you all.
Are you guys going to stay on for anymore?
I'm probably going to run out to the volleyball game. There's a lot of yelling. It sounds exciting. I'm going to go see. That one fan.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we will be taking, um, a moment to, uh, go into executive session to regard, to discuss an issue regarding, um, negotiations. And I just need to unmute myself instead of the spacebar thing. Okay, there we go. Um, so that, um, we can do that. So I'm going to make a motion on that and then we'll vote. Um, I'm assuming that passes. Um, Assistant Superintendent Leoni has sent us an email with a new link. And then we'll go do that. And then we will come back here to finish up, um, discussions related to other agenda items. So I move that the Hamilton Winham Regional School Committee adjourned into executive session and to return to open session for the purpose, for purpose number three, to discuss strategy with respect to bar, to collective bargaining with the Hamilton Winham Education Association. And, um, whatever, and statement in public would have a disadvantageous, um, be disadvantageous to the negotiating position of the committee. Okay, I got it all. Is there a second?
Second.
Ooh, Dana was quick there. So, um, David?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Was that me?
Uh, Dana?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
And Michelle Bailey? Yes. So we will go to that link and we will back here hopefully soon, but it might be twenty to, I've ordered it. All right. Um, all right. So good news for all of you. We won't have an executive session at the end. We were able to cover all of our business because it became necessary. Um, our next, um, point of business is going to be to talk about the full in-person learning plan that was presented at our last meeting. Um, and give some added details around that. And so if Mary Beth wants to start, that would be great.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Um, I want to start this evening with, uh, um, sharing some unexpected information that has arrived um, at our doorsteps today. Um, as you know, the opportunity for our teachers and staff to get vaccinated is a key component of the plan for the return to in-person learning on April fifth. Um, working with our, collaboratively with our public health officials and local medical clinic, we were able to set up um, a Saturday, Mar- March thirteenth clinic date is a date for our staff to receive vaccinations. Um, I had shared that we were on track with our plan with our faculty as recently as four o'clock this afternoon. Um, at approximately four oh six in the afternoon, um, the clin- the clinic received word and then relayed, relayed it to us that the state has told them that they may not provide a day exclusively for our teachers and staff to be vaccinated. Um, and I certainly apologize if there are any teachers online and that you are hearing it here for the first time. We have sent a communication to you to let, to inform you of this change. Um, needless to say, this is an extremely frustrating development. We have state education officials mandating a return to school and at the same time, so state health- We have state education officials mandating a return to school and at the same time, state health officials putting up a major and seemingly unnecessary roadblock at the last minute. We will continue to support teachers in their efforts to get these critical vaccines. And at the same time, we will also continue to work on our plan for return despite this speed bump. Um, and this evening I will present to the committee, the plan that we have on the table to return students to school on April 5th. So with that being said, I'm going to share my screen and pull up the plan that is in place or proposed at this moment. And what you will see here is the next iteration of the plan that was presented last week.
And you're not sharing quite yet. One more push.
Yeah, no, I'm just.
All right, super. Okay.
There we go. So as our conversations have continued to evolve, and we have added to our plan and in some instances, we have certain elements of our plan complete. We have open negotiations with the HWEA on the MOA. Last week, the school committee did vote to approve pool testing, made a fund transfer and voted a calendar change for teachers to provide a day before that the April 5th date for preparation for all students returning to full in-person. The school committee this evening has the ability to approve a four, five and April 5th return for secondary students. As a reminder to the committee and to the community, that is a date that is put out by the state for elementary that is mandated. So the school committee would need to take action for secondary students on that date. We will also be releasing a family survey tomorrow with an FAQ document asking families to select the program that they would like to participate in. Either fully in-person or fully remote models will be the two options. This is, uh, this particular piece is also coming out from the guidance from the state that was issued yesterday, asking all districts to collect this information from families. As, as I just shared, as of the time this was uploaded this afternoon, the district vaccination clinic was on track. That has changed, but we do know that there are multiple opportunities for teachers to continue to get vaccines and we will be problem solving and trying to support our teachers in making this happen. Pool testing begins on March 15th at the secondary level. We are going to need a fast turnaround on that family survey. So that is scheduled for March 16th to have people make decisions. The school committee, right now, our plan is to try to have an MOA in place by March 17th. On March 19th, families will be getting information regarding the return to school plans for their particular building. One of the things we, we know families will need and want is an opportunity to have a question and answer period with their building principals and ask questions about specific processes and approaches in each of the buildings. So we have scheduled the high schools, a family Zoom meeting for March 22nd. All elementary schools will host them on March 23rd. The middle school will host the Zoom meeting on March 24th. On March 25th, we begin pool testing at the elementary level and the Apple Remote Program would have their family Zoom meeting. Tents were planned to arrive at March 26th. The vendor was interested in getting them set up early, so they got them set up last week and we will have access to these tents free of charge during that, the extra time between now and March 26th. March 29th, we have the desk being delivered. April 1st is the teacher in-service. April 2nd is our scheduled vacation day and our, our proposed plan brings all students back on April 5th. So that is the, the latest changes and updates to our plan. And I would be happy to answer any questions that the committee may have. And I'm going to stop sharing now.
And there we go. I'm on mute. Sorry. All right. So we'll ask questions and then see about that. Peter?
I know I'll have other questions, but I want to start with the April 12th. We originally scheduled that to.
That's a vote next. Don't worry about that.
I'm sorry, what?
That'll be the next vote. That's the calendar vote?
Well, I just, it's on this calendar here, so I thought.
Yeah, that's the next agenda item. But that's fine. It's the next agenda item.
But it's right here in front of me. Anyway.
Yeah. So I think I know your question is, why don't you go ahead and ask it, Peter? It's, it wasn't on this, but it, go ahead.
If the vaccination is not going to happen and the second vaccination was supposed to happen on April 11th, do we still need to, we don't, the, the, the April 12th change is now moot, right?
Yes, I, what we went, what we had been told and what we had planned for is that the second vaccination would be delivered to our staff on Sunday, April 11th. Now that we are not in a position to ensure that our, the vast majority of our staff is vaccinated on the 13th, that date becomes now a void. So I would withdraw that request this evening.
So we'll pass over that. Michelle?
Um, pool testing, where do we stand with the responses from parents?
Um, and I'll invite Tom to jump in here as well. We do have percentages by school. They are still, people are still signing up. We are not where we want to be in terms of a hundred percent turnout. But what I'll ask Tom to do is pull up those numbers and, and let you know percentage wise by school where we are. Michelle, I'm also going to use this as an opportunity to speak to the community about how critically important this is that we come together and have all people participate in the pool testing. We are, we need our students to participate, our staff to participate, our bus drivers to participate. When we have high levels of participation, this becomes another really important mitigation strategy to keep our, our students, our staff and our community safe.
In addition to Tom, I don't know if Mary Beth Ting wants to comment too, but.
Yeah, let me see. Mary Beth, if you're willing to raise your hand, I'll pull you into the conversation.
Sure. If, if you can, just give me a minute to pull up the file so I can read off the percentages to you.
Yeah. And if I should ask, ask another question too, related to that. Is there any way that a family can know, asking for a friend, be me, if they, if their response has been registered? Just because I received a communication today and I was like, oh, I thought I had, you know, registered. But I'm not so sure now.
Sure. So what we will, to answer that question while I'm looking for the file, what we will ask families to do is for the secondary level, which is slated to launch next Monday. We asked that consent to begin next Monday be turned in by tomorrow afternoon. We'll be sending out a communication in the morning. So we can have Friday to construct the pools. And at that time, everybody that is listed will receive an email letting them know that they're slated to begin on Monday. That's how we've built it. Going forward in the next, like as we open up the consents for next week, I'll make sure I add to the consent form a receipt. So people have it in their email box. So let them know it's been recorded. So one little thing that I learned today actually is that, uh, that was not sent, the receipt was not sent. Uh, when people finish with the consent form, it is, they do get a screen that says your response has been recorded, but I think it would be wise for people to have that in their email box with what they've actually consented to. So.
Thank you.
Be patient with me. I can let you know. Let me see.
So my other question.
Start with.
Question about that too. So at my school, people have to register every week. Well, we need to register every week? Or we're in.
Nope. Uh, once you're in, you're in. Um, and with the reminder that we're sending out tomorrow, we'll let people know the process for opting out. It's just a simple call to the school nurse, um, if you're wishing to opt out. But you will not have to consent every single week, uh, but you have the ability to jump in the pool. You know, on a rolling basis. So we hope that, you know, with launching this, people will see the results and will, you know, create a movement and get more people to jump in. So let me start and I'm going to have to toggle between multiple files. But so far at the Cutler School, I'll start with elementary schools. So Cutler School, uh, we have 24.41% participation rate for students, 5.36% for staff. And go to Winthrop. Winthrop School, 31.14% student, 10% staff. And I will go to Bukeur, uh, 48.97% students, 38.78% staff. Kudos to Bukeur. And middle school, we have 30.79% student participation, 27.94% staff. And for the high school, we have 46.92% student participation and 30.85% staff. And those numbers have been increasing at a high rate, especially at the high school. We've seen a, um, almost a double in participation just over the matter of, uh, four days, I believe. So.
There's an incentive at the.
What's that?
There's an incentive at the high school. The first class to get to a hundred percent gets a donation to their class fund.
Not just the first class, any class, any class that reaches a hundred percent participation. $500 will be donated to their class. So thank you to the family that pledged this. You know, I think that has driven up some of the numbers is that has been circulating through the high school. So.
We have some amazing students and we, we have great confidence that they are going to get that number to continue to climb.
Yeah. And, and to the point that we made last week, if you've had COVID, which means you can't actually participate in the pool testing, you should still sign up because as soon as your days are up, we'll go back and test you right away. So that it keeps everybody safe. And most people know better than any that you want to be pool tested so that it don't spread.
We've told everybody, you know, even if you've been vaccinated, sign up consent. And it's built into our process to actually validate whether or not they've had a COVID infection in the past 90 days. So we have a process for that.
And Mary Beth, do you want to talk anything about it? And then we'll have questions from Anna and, and Julia.
The only thing I was going to say was to Michelle Horgan, which is, um, I received as a parent of high school. So I received a communication today as well. Generally with an initial rollout, you'll receive communications that blanket the entire family population, not just those, you know, we don't tease out who is already responded. So rest assured that I'm sure you've been counted. We can definitely check to be sure that's the case. But usually it's just a rollout to try to, to encourage participation. And it would be fascinating, Tom, to see the difference between like pre 3pm or whatever and after to, that might be very gratifying to Mr. Tracy to see.
Anna and then Julia?
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Um, I have questions about the reopening plan, but since we're talking about pool testing, if I have a cool testing question for Mary Beth Ting and Tom, well, we're right on topic. Is it okay if I ask it now or does that mess this up? Cause it's like.
Seems like it rolls into this whole going back to school.
Well, and that way Mary Beth doesn't necessarily have to stay up with us, you know, as she often does tell the wee hours. So, um, I have a question about pool testing that came through from a parent. Could you just describe a little bit for people who are not familiar with what it is? What exactly the kids will be asked to do? What kind of supervision will be there? Cause I know some parents are a little bit concerned about the mechanics of like, I know it's kind of like picking your nose with a Q-tip, which sounds disgusting. That's kind of what it is. But could you reassure parents who are on the fence about what their children will be asked to do? Who will supervise it? Who's self-swabbing? And what exactly does that mean for people? I've, I think the public would benefit from that right now.
Mary Beth, I'll turn it to you. You say it so eloquently.
Maybe love demos, maybe.
We have a video that will be posted tonight on the website. So.
So there is, there's a wonderful video that, um, Chrissy De Lima, who is our drama and public speaking teacher at the middle school and has done a lot with drama at the middle school level, has made with a number of students from the middle and high school. So I would really, it's a wonderful piece of work from the students and from Mr. Lima. So that I would encourage you all to take a look at. I will say that Mr. Huby and I made a quick one yesterday and we're going to go back to the drawing board with that. Cause once we saw Chrissy's, we knew we needed to do better work. Because we really would like to show something a little bit more up close and personal. So Anna, as to how it's going to roll out at each school, it's going to be slightly different, obviously with high schoolers than it will be with elementary school students. So I know from speaking directly with one of my elementary school nurse colleagues, she's very interested in being right there at the collection, at the sampling with the youngest. So that there is, we are partnering with Boport, as you know, from our previous meeting. We're partnering with Boport and they will be there to assist. But I know in speaking, for instance, like with Lisa Druskit, she wants to be there because she knows her students and she's a familiar face. You know, and she will be there to assist. The guidance says that students in grade two and up can self-swab. Basically, I should, I should have a toothpick, not a toothpick, goodness, a Q-tip here. Toothpick would be bad. Do not try that at home. Uh, but with a Q-tip, you basically are going up the nostril, not very high, and you just make big circles around. A good sample, you'll actually see movement of the nostril because you're rubbing it around the inside. Something very simple to do. It's not uncomfortable. You don't have to go way up high. It's just down low. And the goal is to get the epithelial cells of the nostril. Okay? So students in many settings that Tom and I and the other nurses have visited, oftentimes they'll say, do you want to do it yourself or do you want me to help you this time? And even younger students, after they've done it, after they've experienced it once, may want to choose to do it themselves. They will certainly be observed. You know, if they're just kind of twisting it back and forth rather than really swabbing around, they may require some direction and assistance. I will say that, um, sorry, I lost my train of thought with that noise in my house.
Nostril movement, I think is where you were.
Yeah. So that, you know, that's what you really want to see in a, in a good collection. I know this is down nitty gritty, but that's.
I think parents want to know.
Yeah, you really want to see. It should not be uncomfortable. The one thing that I will say that we heard in a test yesterday that could be, that could be helpful is many families will have a Q-tip at home. And once we can get the, um, Tom, we should probably push out one of those videos from that cute little boy from grade two from another district. You know, when parents see it, you could actually practice at home with a Q-tip with your child. Your, your, your whole family could practice. You know, just going in and one, two, three, out, next nostril, one, two, three. And then cotton side down in the tube is, is what children are going to experience very quick. You know, when they leave the classroom, they're going to be asked to blow their nose, wash their hands, swab their nose, wash their hands and back to the classroom, quick and easy. And we're partnering with Boport to help us with that collection. My understanding is at most of the element. My understanding is at most of the elementarys, their school nurse is gonna be right there on site as the friendly face that they know.
Okay.
I will be posting the video to the district Twitter in about thirty seconds. So. At H W O underscore schools, I'm gonna make that link live so people can understand what we're talking about.
Awesome. Okay. So Mary Beth, I do have some questions about the plan itself. But while I have Mary Beth Ting here and Tom and Mary Beth Banyos, especially nursing, I just want to acknowledge, you know, the hard work that you guys put into the vaccination clinic. I know you were trying to really do something extraordinary and it's so unfortunate that it, it fell apart. But I think it's worth noting that your efforts were, were genuine to try to do something to help our teachers. And I know you put a lot of time into it, too. And it's really frustrating when you invest time and it doesn't work out. And you almost, you want the time back because I know that's precious. So I just want to acknowledge, like, I think everyone appreciates what you were trying to do. And it's really unfortunate and I'm hopeful that teachers can utilize the state resources to get vaccinated as soon as possible. But I just, I want to say thank you and I'm sorry. And I hope that we can all really continue to keep the pressure on to get teachers vaccinated. So thank you for the, the investment on that. So Mary Beth Banyos, because we're not gonna have another school committee meeting before parents have to make a decision, I want to ask you some, some questions. I know you may not have the answers to yet, but I'm hopeful we can get as much detail to the public as possible so that they can answer the survey. So the first question, which I know everyone has talked a lot about, and I know the DESI guidance had a lot of suggestions about lunch that we actually talked about last week as well. Could you or Tom go into a little bit more detail about how we're going to maintain that six feet at lunch, which is now kind of coming as a directive from DESI on the lunch part itself? Could you talk about what we're gonna do there for people?
Sure. So one, just to reiterate what you're saying is the DESI guidelines are clear. They have not moved off the position that we need to be at six feet of physical distancing during lunch. There were some questions as to whether or not that would change. They, they have held firm to that. Today, in our leadership team meeting, we went through high school, middle school and elementary. Each level believes that they have a plan that will enable us to meet that guideline of six feet of physical distancing in each of our schools during the lunchtime period. It varies by school, so I, I don't want to go through and say, here's what would happen in Cutler and Bukeur. But what I, what we, what I can share with, with families and will be in the F A Q. That goes out with the survey is that parents can make the assumption that at lunchtime, students will be at at least six feet of physical distancing. And we have plans both if we can use the tents outside and what we would do in the case of a rainy day where that would not be accessible. And when we, when, when principals are sending out the, the family notifications, they'll talk about the specifics of their school. And when we have those office hours for families, there will be another chance to hear specifically how your school is going to handle that.
I think that's really reassuring to hear. Next question, this came directly from a constituent who had previously donated air purifiers. And I, I am wondering if are, are we planning to purchase any more of those? Especially for those high volume maskless areas, cafeterias. Tom, you and I had a little back and forth after this came up from the Brad Hill conversation and you talked about the energy grid and capacity. I thought immediately about the flux capacitor, which I know wasn't right, but it made me laugh when I thought about the flux capacitors in the building. So are we gonna install air purifiers? If so, in what places and are there limitations around that? I know one parent is very keen to know the answer to that question.
Sure. Truthfully, I wasn't prepared to have the talk air purifiers. I'll do my best to capture not some of the limitations, but just some of the things we have to look at before we buy on a, on a large scale. So one is the, the capacity of our electrical system, which it's more than just the purchase of the air purifier. It's also making sure that we have enough, you know, space in our electrical panels and the amperage needed to run them. In most cases, we can deploy them. I, I think that's gonna be a decision that, you know, we, we make as a district on where like we have to identify the funding source first, right? To do so. We do have on hand, we have HEPA fil- standalone HEPA filters to deploy in case we have a space where we have a failure of the HVAC system that we temporarily deploy until we can get in and, and repair. But I, I do believe, I mean, it's, it's always worth looking into how we can improve air exchange in these times.
I think that might be a key.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to them. I mean, just as a general rule of thumb, we've purchased them and been able to deploy them in situations throughout the year. Not just for HVAC failure, but where we have instances of therapies, for example, where it's tough to physically distance between people and we need to improve the air exchange for T, for student and teacher accommodations where people do require more. So. I'm not opposed to it, but on, on a grand scale, I think that would be, have to be a, a discussion we have one.
And maybe it could be a target at not, not every room, but like I said, where the masks are off or those special environments. I know that that's a, that's one option. My next two questions are sort of related to the fully remote track. And I say this because I have such affection for fully remote families. I've been a fully remote family for a long time, but in, in the process of sort of switching. Mary Beth, can you describe how or if the fully remote option and deployment will change for the middle and the high school? Or will it change in light of the shift?
Yeah, I, I, I would say that one of the things that we, we may see is both at the elementary and secondary level, the, an impact on the fully remote model as we are continuing to look at this. One of the things that, that, that this is not the only district that is looking at this. The state guidance is actually very specific around the fact that there's going to need to be flexibility and some trade-offs in terms of the different programs to make this work. So at the secondary level right now, and, and again, we are, we are still working through the details of this, but when we are doing streaming, there, half the students are in the class and half the students are at home. At that, so the lessons are designed in such a way where there is a lot of interaction between the two. When we have the vast majority of students in person, we will probably have some level of streaming for the class, but that not the same level of interaction that is currently occurring. The other reality in terms of streaming is that as we, we get more access to outdoor learning spaces, there will be places where the classroom may be going or the teacher may be going that it is not going to be available. Streaming will not be an available resource that can be provided. So those are, are some of the things that we're looking at at the secondary level. At the elementary level, and this is why this survey is so incredibly important, is what is going to happen with the number of students that may or may not move from fully remote to in, fully in person. We have three dedicated staff right now to the fully remote model at the elementary level. And those staff came from places where there were bubbles in the enrollment. If the vast majority of those kids come back, we may need to move one or two of those, of those people back into a fully in-person classroom and redistribute teach students to different teachers. That is, so that is something that we will not know if it's going to be necessary to do until after we have the actual enrollment numbers of how many students will either stay in fully remote or potentially families moving to fully remote. Or do we see a large shift to fully in person? And we have to deploy staff as enrollment dictates.
Okay. So based on those responses, at the middle and high school level, what you're describing sounds like the potential loss of streaming for fully remote students as an integrated part of the curriculum. I know in the beginning, when the cohorts were separate, there were actually dedicated classes that were not simulcast. They were only, they were only Zoom class for those students. Do you imagine, I, I mean, just imagine a scenario if the class is outside and streaming really is not gonna work. How are we gonna support those students that previously were zooming into those classes? I, I mean, I, I think just suspending them is gonna be difficult. So that's the question at the middle and high school. And then DESI was quite clear in its guidance that they want to encourage live streaming for these fully remote students. Is this now the time that we could finally get rid of edgenuity? Which, as you know, is a program that I think has been a failure in terms of its content and support. And I know the numbers are there, but is this an opportunity to change the remote model at the elementary level because people have been so dissatisfied with it?
I, I would not anticipate that at this time. And, and if, if we think about this, what we have right now for classroom teachers at the elementary level, we have had less streaming than we've had at the middle and secondary level. We have found it to be in, in places where we are deploying that it, it tends to be the upper grade levels where we've had some level of success with that. And not a lot of success with the younger students. So when we are talking about bringing elementary students back to full in-person learning, and again, we, we don't know the numbers until we finish the survey, but let's use a number of ninety percent of students back in a classroom with teachers in this new environment to then ask the teachers. And now you're going to start streaming students that are fully remote. That is, that does not feel like something that would be realistic on any level.
Do you think that the number, depending, again, on numbers, could you shift to that more middle high school model where instead of edgenuity, you actually have a dedicated, you know, teacher who is delivering content directly? Because the, the current APL model, the teachers are not actually teaching content at all. So depending on the numbers, I just want to, I would really encourage us to see this as an opportunity to improve that model because I think that model hasn't been satisfactory to people. So I guess my only comment on all that is it's without knowing more of those details and may, maybe it'll be in the F A Q. But I think as a parent looking to make that decision, it's difficult to know what to do without knowing what it's really gonna look like. So as much as you can flush that out for people to make that decision on the surveys, you'll get better data if you actually really explain what's that gonna look like for my kid. So those are all my questions about this portion of the agenda. Thank you.
Anybody else? Dana, do you want to make a motion or do you?
I actually, well, I actually have a quick question. I can, I'm not sure whether this is Tom or, or Mary Beth Banyos. But how, when we're measuring the distance between the desks, how is that measured?
Because it's not, it's not butt cheek to butt cheek. It's very specific.
I, I didn't think it was that funny a question, but.
I mean, I could give you the wise guy answer with, let's say, a yardstick.
The yardstick.
Six feet on, like, and, and the term that we've been using along is nose to nose. So center of the face to center of the face.
Thank you.
Julia? A quick comment and quick question. First of all, I want to reiterate what Anna said about, thank you so much for trying to move mountains and make the impossible possible. I just, what I want the public to know is that this is not a fault of the district. This is not that you didn't cross your Ts and dot your Is. I know that Mary Beth Ting worked so hard and a leader, leadership team. I know that Superintendent Banyos worked incredibly hard to make the vaccine clinic happen and it has nothing to do with the district. It was just a, you know, it was a directive from the state. So I just wanted to really reiterate that. So thank you. Secondly, my question, only because I do know that it is something coming up very frequently in the public and in conversations that I have. I just, I, I would like more clarity on what mental health and adjustment counseling and services could be potentially available? What is available now? And is there potential money to put, if, if there's need, if it's, if it turns out April fifth and we go a month and things are fine, that's great. But if we come back and it turns out that a lot of students are in need, more students than we knew of I E Ps or of counseling or of just extra support, I think the public would, would really like to know what are some of the plans in place for that? And that's, that's my only question. I'm fully in support of this plan for the record.
So, so Julia, you're right that there, there are some things that we won't know till we bring all students back. It's certainly something that we've been talking about and thinking about. We do have counseling support in all of our schools. We have dedicated therapeutic classrooms in, in our elementary schools. We have similar types of programs in our secondary schools. So we do have a depth of resource to address students' social emotional needs. Again, we can't predict what we'll see for students returning to a full classroom that have been used to smaller, more intimate settings. So there are, again, we've talked about the ESAR funds that have, that are currently available to us. And we, we got word today at a, a meeting with the commissioner that the federal funds are coming. They, it looks like they'll be larger certainly than any other, other ESAR stimulus monies that we've received. So I would say that if we see the need to provide and bring in additional resources for our students, that there should be funding sources there to be able to do that.
Thank you.
If you can find the people.
That is the challenge. But the, certainly a, a major obstacle would have been funding, but that particular obstacle looks like it's been removed.
Peter?
Chair Bailey, just a moment ago, you asked if Ms. Alara could make a motion. This, this conversation's been kind of meandering. What do you, what do we?
Yep.
What are we, what are we voting on? The, the return to in-person learning? Okay. Well, I just want to make a point then. You know, I, I applaud the successes. I, I, I was appreciative of the, the progress. You know, we had low transmission rates, the vaccination of folks with comorbidities, vaccination of seven, you know, people over seventy, the pool testing, e- even my daughter wants to go back to school. But now teacher vaccines are not going to happen. So my fear is that the timing is just too soon. I think the reason we have low transmission is because the mitigation strategies are working. And stopping now, I believe, risks negating all of the sacrifices we've made. And I think we're also going to force a number of hybrid students to go to remote. And that eating lunches without masks still gives me pause. And so morally, I cannot vote to put people at risk.
Dana, can you make a motion and then we'll have David speak?
Sure. I move that we approve the return to full in-person learning plan as presented, or do I need to say second to, do I need to say what it is? I move.
A second. Anna, one second. David, thank you for waiting. Go ahead.
Um, I, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, we, we have this plan in place, right? And part of, part of actually putting a plan in place is the ability to then pivot, right? When, when things don't go exactly as planned. So, you know, we had this wonderful opportunity of vaccinating, you know, potentially vaccinating a hundred percent of the employees in our district, teachers and staff that, you know, through no fault of our district's own and our administration's own, has hit a speed bump. The important thing to remember, though, is that this is only a speed bump. We don't know the devastating effects of it yet, right? So it's not a hundred percent that it didn't work. It, it, it's, you know, let's see how many we can get in with, you know, because that vaccination clinic is still going on, right? It's just not entirely made up of Hamilton staff or has the potential to no longer be one hundred percent Hamilton staff. So until we actually see the results of that, you know, let's not say that it's not happening. At, you know, at the same time, you know, we can definitely work as a community to help, you know, find vaccination spots. um, you know, find, uh, vaccination spots for teachers that are, um, you know, haven't, didn't get into that particularly easy pool. Excuse me, um, and, you know, so th- there are, there are things that help, right? But it's important that we move forward. I, I think that I did pretty clear over the past, you know, month or so, sort of my thoughts about how we should be moving back as a district. I'm not, you know, a hundred percent in on this plan because I'd love, you know, to really see us concentrating on, um, uh, being proactive in addressing our students with need, you know, more needs coming back, uh, anxieties and this sort of, um, needs within the classroom. And sort of trying to catch up from not having very successful campaigns, um, in the hybrid, in remote models, right? I, I think that sort of overlooking the, um, the catastrophic failure that edgenuity is turning into is, um, something that really shouldn't be, uh, being cast aside to the degree that it is. And, uh, that should be on everyone's immediate radar on, uh, being fixed. You know, and, and you know, as I said, I think, I think these are the things that we've been talking about for quite some time now. You know, that being said, it is important to acknowledge that there is a plan in place and that, you know, we do need to, um, continue and support this plan in its weaknesses. You know, this brings me back to August, however, because I had a very, very, very similar speech when I voted for our original plan in August. Um, and I put a lot of faith in the leadership team that I have, to be quite frank, you guys didn't sort of, you know, live up to your end of the bargain a, a lot of the time. Excuse me. Um, and, you know, I, one, one thing I like about this plan is it's a lot more in-depth um, than previous plans. I think you're hearing the needs of the community and of the board and, um, sort of the transparency, uh, what's expected. Um, you know, from the administration of this plan, so I can appreciate that. But I do, you know, worry about a couple of things that were said here, a couple of responses that were said in that, you know, we should already be trying to hire, um, additional counselors. We're saying it's not a funding issue. We're saying that it's actually hard trying to do it. So we should, we should be hiring it before we even know to the extent of what we need them, how badly we need them, because we know we need them, right? Um, and like I said, we should not be kicking that edgenuity can down the road any further, right? Um, that is not part of this plan, but it should be part of this discussion. Right? Um, I think that, you know, for Hamiltonum and Hamiltonum parents, we felt, we have collectively felt the bar has been lowered this year in, um, you know, the quality of education that our students have gotten. That's not to say that our teachers not wore us off every minute of every, right? Since la- for the past year, right? Almost to the day. But that is to say that we have not done a good enough job supporting them in creating a plan up to our standards, you know, as Hamiltonum to the quality of education that's expected in this district. So, uh, you know, that's just how I want to say, as I'm moving forward and I do plan on supporting this, that my expectations are extremely high and I expect you guys to meet those expectations.
Dana or Michelle or Julia? Yes, actually Dana or Michelle, do you have anything to say?
I, I, I do, but I, I, I think Anna was before me.
I'm just trying to give everybody a chance to speak.
Oh, no, I spoke. I did speak.
Right.
And, and I spoke too, in the beginning.
Um, uh, thank you, Michelle. I think, um, I want to echo something Peter just, um, David just said, which is I, I am concerned about, um, being ahead of the curve for students coming back, even just simple operational things with, you know, um, students who haven't been in buildings, especially at those transition points. So I would, if anything, I would err on the side of being overly cautious on that particular fund. If we have the funding, we have the staff, we have a little bit of time now to get ahead of it. I would rather bring some people in to help with transitions and find that we didn't necessarily need them than not have them. I think this is a moment where being over-prepared is going to be really helpful. And I think especially, um, for families like, like mine, where my kids are transitioning back, um, that peace of mind, just to know there's a few more extra bodies to help, uh, what I think is a good piece of comfort. So I really support what David said. Um, I want to say this, you know, my motivation to support this is that while there are unknowns and variables and things we can't control, right? We can't control state access to vaccination. That, that's, we can try to influence it, we can support it. The thing that's become really powerfully obvious to me and the reason I think we need to push ahead is that our families are, they are suffering at a point that to me is no longer morally tolerable. I think that we have persisted in this plan for, for, um, for long enough. And for me, every phone call I get from a parent whose child is suffering in some new heartbreaking way, it was, it was a slow crescendo through the fall. Well, I didn't like this. This isn't what I thought. Sort of what David said, like, I thought it would be better, but it wasn't better. And then we didn't really make it better improvement. Then, you know, coming out of winter break, there was this expectation, like, well, we're going to have more live streaming. And that's going to make it better and that's going to make it better. And I think we're now at the point where, you know, every, every week I have a new conversation with the parent whose child is at an emotional distress point or a learning distress point. And it's, it's, I think this is for me, the moment where we as a committee have to put the students first ahead of every other consideration. And, um, if we don't do that, I think that we will, we will lose sort of the public confidence in what we're doing. That is our mark, that is, that's the whole point of us spending six hours, seven hours arguing, fighting the minutia. Like, we're doing it for them. And I personally think that despite the logistical challenges I know Tom is going to have to work through and the nurses, Mary Beth and your staff, and then he has to figure out how to pay for it. Mary Beth Banyos has to figure out how to message it. Like, it's, we have to pull together because I think if we delay any further, um, I worry about, um, I said this to someone, I think it, it makes a lot of sense to me. For most of the time, we've been more concerned about the acute loss of life of COVID. Like, we've been concerned that people will get sick or have, or death, you know? And those are real concerns and I'm not minimizing them. But I think as time has worn on, that we have to recognize there are less acute scars that are as permanent in some ways. So there are children in our district who have survived and hopefully will continue to survive, but they have suffered permanent scars, academic and emotional from this pandemic. And I think that if it's time now for us to shift away from the acute concern of COVID, which is still there, unfortunately, I think we have to make more of an effort to say the kids are suffering and the only way to really make that better is to bring them back in person. Like, we, we, for the vast majority of families, not all, but the vast majority of families, it's not that they want their kids back in school. I actually think they need their kids back in school. Those kids need to be there. So I'm very much in support of this. I agree with David. I, I expect a high level of operational efficiency and transparency and clarity. I think that the public really needs to know what we're going to do. Here's why it's working. If something's not going right, we need to take ownership and be like, wow, that didn't work. Now we have to do this. We just need to own it and move on from it. Um, and yes, I, I have said from the beginning, edgenuity is, um, ill-conceived and not well. And now that I've had almost, what, nine months of direct personal experience with it and have filed a formal DESI complaint on it, as I said that I would, um, that program needs to go. And I think if we do not address it at this transition point, to me, that is sort of a, a real failure of our district to say, we can do so much better than that program. And I compel us to find a way to get rid of edgenuity and do something different with our fully remote elementary students because it is an abomination. I have real questions about its service to the district. And I recently pulled my own daughter from it because I think the program is doing her more harm than good. And I felt that strongly about it. So I, I really want us to work a little bit harder on that. But nonetheless, I think we have to go ahead. We have to put the kids first and just pull together, you know? Really pull together on this now. The moment of division has to be over and we have to move forward as a unit for the sake of the community.
Peter?
Very briefly, a learning management system would have resolved this.
Okay. Um, so I have not spoken, so I'm going to take this opportunity and then I think we'll vote. Um, so this year, um, I hope that the community has seen what an integral part the schools, our public schools play in the life of the community. The schools provide therapy for students that need it. They provide for their mental health. We provide sports for their physical health. We provide teachers for their academic health. We provide other students and opportunities for their social emo- emotional health. Our public schools are the heart of our community. And this year, our community has suffered because our public schools have not been able to operate. And when you think about how important our public schools are and how important it is for our public and our community to support our schools because our kids need it. If this year has done nothing else, it's taught the entire country how important they have made their schools. They provide the services that children need to become citizens. And the fact that there has been such a push to put our kids back into the buildings where they're with our educators shows that our educators, and even in the fall, that we wanted our educators as much as possible to be in touch with our students, that our educators in this district are really the thing that makes the district special. And we need to remember that we need to support our teachers through this and we need to support our schools through this, whether it's through this decision or it's through this budget season or it's into the summer. Because all of this is going to be, I hope, important. I think kids want to go back to school and there's a lot of kids out there who would have never said that a year ago. They would have never said, I'm excited to go to school and they are now. And so I think we need to think about remembering how important our public schools are to our kids and our community. Um, but what this plan has shown is that stuff happens that's sometimes out of our control. So we're going to need the community to continue to be flexible. If we can't open all the buildings on April 5th because of something, just know it's not because we didn't try. It's not because we didn't try our best. It's not because people aren't doing their job to the point of exhaustion. It's because there are so many things happening out of our control. And I'm, I'm just going to say it and, you know, if you want to put me in the paper or whatever for, I'm just going to say it. The lack of leadership coming from the state in helping schools has been so frustrating. They gave us little guidance, told us to make a plan. We did the best we can. We mirrored very many other school districts. Then they changed the rules. They changed the guidance. They changed the rules again. They asked for reports. Then they asked for this. Then they asked for that. And they changed the rules. Then they moved teachers and then they moved teachers to this. And then they take away the vaccination. It's been very frustrating. I have sympathy for those people who are making those decisions because as all of us know, it's been very difficult to make decisions. But I am quite angry with them. So I just want them to know. It hasn't felt collaborative. I do want to thank the town. The town has been very good. Leadership here has been good. Uh, the Board of Health has been very supportive of us and I appreciate that. And I hope the community will see the importance of our schools and remember that this was a bump in the road and that we need to support our schools because it was so important for our kids to go back to school because our schools are essential. So if people are ready to vote, I would like to vote on this. Basically, as I recall, we're voting support for the plan as it was presented. Does that sound right to everybody? And I believe David seconded it. So, Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Peter?
No.
David?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Michelle, yes. Thank you for allowing me the time on the soapbox there. Okay. The next item on our agenda is a school calendar vote because, um, of the late breaking news. Instead of being able to anticipate when all of our staff might have a reaction to, um, their vaccination, it's going to be more varied and we may, as may present a challenge for staffing on some days. So again, we appreciate the community's flexibility, um, on how we may have to operate to navigate that sort of absenteeism. Um, so we are to the exciting part of the year where we get to be dazzled by the brilliance of, um, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for putting together a budget for the next year, which in the middle of uncertainty. So hopefully the slides are dazzling. Good luck.
Benny, want to pull up the presentation? And then this presentation is going to be technical through the numbers. So I'm going to ask Benny to take on, um, going through the slides with you.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself there. Okay. So tonight, we're, we're, uh, in, not introducing, we're presenting the final FY22 budget recommendation. So I'm not going to go too much into the detail as we have the past two months. I'm just going to kind of run through the final number, a couple of the big ticket items and then the calculation on that end assessments. So I added this, uh, slide a minute ago because I heard Michelle, uh, ask for the calculation, uh, during the budget hearing. Um, so you can see on the top here, the to- the final FY22 budget recommendation that we're putting forward is approximately thirty-eight point seven million dollars. This is an increase of approximately one point seven million or four point six three percent. Uh, just to run through some of the big ticket items that make up the need for a one point seven million dollar increase is roughly eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars alone in level service expenses. So this is just literally turning the calendar from, uh, June 30th to July 1st. It includes two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in step increases, eighty-three thousand dollars in column changes. Uh, it includes the addition of a math teacher at the middle school this year. It includes the addition of a seventh kindergarten and the need for a grade three bubble next year at Winthrop. Uh, so those are some of the big ticket items. From there, you remove our operating expenses of approximately one point eight million and you're left with what we call our operating expenses after our offsets of approximately thirty-six million. From there, you reduce our revenues of approximately four point one million. This includes our increase in chapter seventy funding. Uh, from there, you're left with our net operating budget of approximately thirty-two million. So from there, the thirty-two million, you separate it up into Hamilton and Wenham. Hamilton makes up approximately sixty-four point four four percent of the total budget, which means an increase of approximately a million dollars for them. For Wenham, they represent thirty-five point five six percent of the budget and are seeing an increase of approximately two hundred and thirteen thousand or one point eight six percent. So from there, you add in, add in our debt service budget, uh, which for FY22, we're calculating to be approximately five hundred and seventy-five thousand. You again, break it up based on the percentage of enrollment, sixty-four point four four percent Hamilton, thirty-five point five six percent Wenham. The end result is three hundred and seventy thousand for Hamilton and two hundred and four for Wenham. So then finally, you saw the slide during the, uh, budget. So then finally, you saw the slide during the, uh, budget hearing. It is both the combined operating budget and the debt service for both the town assessments. When combining the two together, we're ultimately seeing an increase of approximately one point two million dollars being assessed to the towns, which represents an increase year over year of just under four percent at approximately three point nine nine. So this is the budget broken up by DESI category, uh, regional school district. As I've said multiple times, the regional school district has to approve their budget based on a chart of accounts that DESI has put forward. There's about eleven different categories that you break up the expenses in. Uh, you can see again, the total requested is about thirty-eight million, uh, for the total operating budget alone. Uh, again, an increase of approximately one point seven five. So I believe from here, I have the motions for you, but I'm ready to kinda take any last minute questions you might have or, or I guess any concerns before you actually cast your vote.
Should I make the motion, Michelle, before we discuss?
Yeah, let's have Vinny keep that up, make the motion, and then we'll discuss that way. We don't need to have that going back and forth. Thanks, Ben. If you can just put it back up for a sec, thanks.
Cause I didn't memorize it. Uh, I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee vote to adopt the FY22 Total General Fund Expenditures Budget of thirty-seven million, five hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. This amount includes general fund operating expenses after offsets in the amount of thirty-six million, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and general fund debt service expenses in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. Furthermore, the gross operating expenses of the district before offsets in the amount of thirty-eight million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars have been allocated to the DESI-defined chart of accounts according to the summary by DESI category chart included in this budget presentation dated March 10th, 2021.
Someone like to second that mouthful?
Second.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Um, Vinny, just, I just, one question first for me is that, um, for people who maybe are looking at that chart, they might see that there's like a gigantic, you know, set forty-something percent increase in debt service. Um, and so if, could you just address that just in case people later on have that question that all of us can have, like, remember those sprinklers, you know, whatever that would be, so.
Yep, just trying to get back to it.
Yeah, I think it was even on the first, oh, there it's on that one.
Yes, so in the prior year, um, meaning the FY21 budget, we had the top three projects. Uh, so in during the FY21 budget cycle, uh, we were approved by both Hamilton and Wenham to go out for approximately, I believe it was nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, uh, for a capital ban in relation to various projects around the district. So in the first year, you receive that, um, you receive the whole, you know, we'll call it one million dollars. You receive the whole one million dollars in FY21, and then from there on, you basically have five years to pay it back. So we took that nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, divided it by five, it comes up with your principal payment of roughly a hundred and ninety-one thousand. So you'll see that number repeated for the next five years, the addition of the pay down on the capital projects that were approved at the last town meeting. Does that make sense?
Yes, and we just wanna be clear that not all of that money, not all of those projects were completed, but will be completed.
Yes, not all of them are completed, but you still must start paying it down the following year, which the first year is FY22.
Um, okay, thank you. So now let me put this back on gallery view so I can see everybody. Okay, that works. All right. Um, do people have other questions? Actually, why don't we just brown robbing it around the screen? So Anna, you're next to me right now.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Um, so, um, the slide, the slide I wanna, uh, Vinny doesn't have to put it back up on you, but I wanna make sure everyone is aware of it. So the first presentation tonight, you sort of have this comparison of like version A versus version B, right? Where you talked about if we, if we follow Mary Beth's plan versus not following Mary Beth's plan, it came up with a delta of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That, that attacked that, um, exhibit. I wanna focus on that for a second, um, because as I've said repeatedly, I do not think this budget is the right budget for us at this time. And I profoundly disturbed that not only do not, not only do we not have any support from the teachers, we have profoundly aggressively negative support from the teachers on this idea. And that is really worrisome to me that the teachers have made their voices so clear that they don't think this is a good idea from an educational point of view around literacy. So I really am having a hard time finding support for that. Um, in general, I don't like the transition from teachers in the classroom out of the classroom. So I just, I, I don't support this budget. I think this is the wrong approach for the district, the wrong year to make changes. Um, the reason I wanna focus on the one thirty-eighth. So in looking at this list, Mary Beth, if you sort of back out, Mary Beth and Vinny, if you don't make the switch from the three-point-O library media specialist, the reading specialist, those were the six positions that we're gonna be funding, the instructional coaches and the, um, the K through five literacy and the K through five technology, and it was also supposed to be the middle school, high school reading specialist. So of this one thirty-eight that we'd have to cut essentially to not do your budget, I actually think there's an eighty thousand dollar specialist position that should have also been backed out of that calculation because that was supposed to be funded by the switching of the six that now no longer would happen. So I think if you were to take that out, now we're looking at a difference of fifty-eight thousand, right? In my personal opinion, I think we could very easily come up with that by not funding the family engagement position. That was a close vote. I think that position seems totally superfluous to me and not the priority for this year. And then again, I wanna come back to areas which to me seem like excess budget holding. Um, again, superintendent's contracted services, the budget is forty thousand, seven hundred dollars. That was supposed to be twenty thousand dollars for Portrait of a Graduate. Again, I'm a little bit on the fence if this is the right year to do that. It's also twenty thousand dollars for superintendent's discretionary budget, which I know has always been there. But what I would suggest is I, I question if we need to do the Portrait of a Graduate this year, and I'm wondering if we could cut some of the discretionary, you know, cut that down to five thousand dollars. Then the superintendent's supply budget to me just seems like a, a number that is holding a ton of capacity that need not hold it. And the reason I say that is the budget has been twenty-five thousand dollars, but the actuals in that budget category have been less than a thousand dollars for the past three years. So in my household, if I have three years of actuals that are less than a thousand, the next year, I'm not gonna budget twenty-five thousand dollars. I would scale that back. Maybe we cut it back to two thousand dollars. That would still be a one hundred percent doubling of what had been there. So to me, that's, you know, between those two categories, that's close to forty thousand dollars. And then again, the superintendent's salary contingency budget line item has twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. I again wonder, could we scale that back and, you know, have that, put that ten thousand dollars? Like, I think the budget is holding capacity in a place that it doesn't need to be held. So if you were to restructure that, eliminate the family engagement position, which I don't think is a high priority for this year. And then I think the math on this chart has included the specialists that if we don't do the restructuring, that, that position goes away. I would actually advocate we do that. We hold steady for this year, and next year, we look at building a literacy restructuring plan or adding positions back in. And I would do it in a way that gets support from the teachers because I think the way this works is that the community supports it. I've heard a lot of concerns in the community. And teachers, again, the survey we got from the union last week of the, of the elementary, uh, staff that were surveyed, it was fifty responses from K through five teachers. Eighty-six percent of them said, "No, we don't support this." That, and then the other remaining fourteen percent said, "Maybe." I don't see how we as a committee of good conscience can ignore that kind of feedback from the staff who are charged with implementing this plan. So at, at this moment, I am actually a no on the budget for all those reasons. And I think we could restructure it and get it to a level that meets the criteria from the towns, uh, that could potentially be passable and would be something that could be supported at town meeting. And I know Mary Beth disagrees, I know you do, I know, but that's where I am. That's where I've landed on the day that we have to vote. I remain unconvinced of your plan and I do not support it in its present form, and I know you disagree.
And I appreciate that perspective, Anna. Um, what I'm gonna share with the committee is that I do not see any possible viable way for this, this district to continue without some of these structures in place next year. Um, we have reduced positions at central office. The community engagement again is a restructure. It is not an add to the budget. Um, we are, after already pulling out central office positions, we do not have the people in place that you need to run a district. I, I, this, what I tried to show you at the beginning of the meeting is that there are no districts that run without the support in place. Let me give you a couple of examples around some of the impacts of that. This week, we received word that, um, we had talked about some additional funding that may become available for focusing on literacy within our SOA grant. There are fi, there's five million dollars that's become available. It is a competitive grant. There is not an iota of capacity in this district right now to write that grant. Um, there, you know, if we were to look at something like how might we restructure something and bring in new teachers, there's nobody there to train the teachers, to design the program, um, to develop, uh, professional development experiences. This, this district, uh, i- in my opinion, as your superintendent, as somebody who has been in a central office position for ten years and spent a lot of time, um, working in districts, cannot move forward in a way that, that is going to be viable without restoring these curriculum pieces. And I, and I appreciate and I agree that this would not be a proposal if the situation were not so dire. Um, would there be a way to try to get by another year? Making major changes in the midst of a crisis is, is not, I think, anybody's first go-to. But I am telling you as your superintendent, if you do not get these structures back in place, this district is going to be in a very, very, very difficult situation next year.
Um, Julia, you're next in the circle.
I'm actually gonna disagree with Anna, so that's a shocking turn of events. No, I just, I, I really, I've been over this budget, I feel like with Vinny and Mary Beth, line by line by line. In committee meetings, I'm looking at it right now, um, in phone calls with Mary Beth, I, I just, I don't think it's an egregious use of resources. I'm hopeful about the family engagement coordinator. I'm actually very hopeful about it. It's a restructuring. I know we're, we are, like, the public is thinking, oh, it's a padded, you know, oh, it's just an added person to the central office. It's a restructuring. It's an administrative person that is now going to actually be engaging the families in the community in a time that I think that is completely needed, especially with the April 5th deadline. Um, I think we need an extra person to be talking to them, to be coordinating them with mental health resources or not even, you know, just whatever they need. So I actually, I, I'm really hopeful with that position. Um, and I support curriculum instruction and I, I have to be honest. I mean, if we didn't have a return to school, uh, in place, I probably would have not supported this budget just on principle, like, to be honest. I'm just being fully honest because I, I feel like there's been so little done and it's been so slow, but now it's moving in, at, at a good pace. Um, so I'm, I'm hopeful, I'm optimistic, and I just think I've been through the budget with line by line, especially with Vinny and with Mary Beth. And I'm hopeful, um, and I'm supportive, but I'm completely respectful of, of different opinions, so. Thank you.
Um, Michelle, you're next in the circle.
Thank you. Um, I just had the image last year of us making the vote to cut curriculum and Dr. Kuiper coming in from another meeting and being flabbergasted. Um, and it's not even the right word, aghast maybe, at what we had done and her saying that we would, we cannot continue doing this. Um, we cannot sustain as a district what we have done without, without curriculum. So I applaud, um, Superintendent Daniels for putting this in place with a limited budget and also meeting the town's, um, requirements of, of keeping it within, um, under the budget. So, thank you. I'm supporting this.
Peter.
Thank you. Um, oh, so many directions to go. I am, one, let me just express my frustration right now because I keep hearing that we need curriculum directors to vertically and horizontally line our curriculum. We need to provide training for teachers. We need to identify equity gaps. All of this, for the, for the less, less than a salary of one of our average teachers could have been resolved. Um, and just, I don't understand why everyone's so close-minded about this and not open to this, this solution that would create individual IEPs for our students that would identify learning gaps. Um, that would horizontally and vertically align our curriculum, that would provide on-demand professional development for teachers. This budget is asking for three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in professional development, where for a fraction of that, we could have had on-demand professional developments on the teacher's schedule when they needed it, with a sh, insured, um, alignment that all teachers or all students were receiving the same education. It would have been functional and remote, hybrid or in-person, so I'm frustrated by that. We should be focusing on that. Um, let me go back to, let me agree with, um, Anna on a, on a number of things, the family engagement piece, the portrait of a gal, gal, uh, graduate piece, the superintendent's discretionary fund, all need to be reduced or eliminated right now. The professional development budget should be cut way back um, in order to, to address student learning gaps that happened this year. Um, I, I believe, I understand what the superintendent is trying to do with the curriculum director and instructional coaches. You know, to bring up our MCAS scores, but, you know, they're good long-term solutions, but the most immediate pressing need and the, the priority right now is to address the learning deficits caused by, you know, missing so much school this year. And so my first priority would be to have the reading specialists working directly with students. Um, we can't, we can't take out six highly experienced teachers who work directly with students and move, you know, create five coaching positions and expect teaching assistants, um, to do scripted work. I just, I think there's a, there's a glaring contradiction between this budget and, and all of the statements saying we need to get back to school. You keep saying we need to get back in school for the kids. We need to get back in school to address their learning, uh, the learning gaps and their emotional issues. But there's nothing in here for counselors that we should be focusing on reading specialists. So I'm frustrated by the contradiction between this budget and the statements made that we, of why we need to get back to school. We should have language at the middle school. And I, yeah, I just, I cannot support this budget. You know, we need the reading specialists to be working with students, not teaching teachers this year on how to be more effective teachers. I already trust the teachers. I think they need to be working with, with the students. Um, I think we should be focusing on counseling, uh, helping students reintegrate back into the school. I think we should be focused on language. We should focus on one language at the middle school and do that really well. Again, I'm frustrated by this budget because I think there's a contradiction there between why we're getting back into school and what we're, what the sit, what we're giving them as they get back into school. Um, I'm frustrated that everyone keeps saying we need these positions to address all of these deficits where a learning management system, or a fraction of what we wanna spend. or a fraction of what we want to spend would have addressed all of that. So there's no way I could support this budget, even if it was just, even if it's just the the reading specialist piece of it. I would never support this budget that, you know, the the teachers, the teachers are not just opposed to it. There's frustration and anger and confusion and they're baffled and they're just of how of the changes of this budget. So there's no way I could support this budget. I mean, I had some other pieces I would support long term, but not this year. Thank you.
That was me?
Yeah, David, yeah.
So I don't know where to begin on this, right? We we are obviously coming off of a, you know, unsubstantiated year, like just. And then before COVID even hit, you know, we came, we're coming from a, you know, period of transition that was rather rough for our district. Right? To correct Michelle Horgan just a little bit, the motion the district, the school committee made last year was to reduce the chapter 70 funding by 20% at the request of the towns. While Dr. Kuchenberger was not at the meeting. It was actually after we made that cut that then the positions were reconfigured. But you are correct in, you know, stating that, you know, the curriculum director position especially was a very temporary cut in that we knew, excuse me, that was going to have to be fixed sooner rather than later. The problem I have, you know, one of the big problems I have is this awkward movement we've been forced to make to meet this number, to make sure we don't, you know, to do our part to try to make sure that the towns do not have to go into overrides to support their budgets. And consequently, our budget. And, you know, that's an issue that we've been dealing with for years. And, you know, managing these towns by cutting the budgets is not fair to the schools. It's not fair to the police departments. It's not fair to the fire departments. It's not fair to the DPWs, right? That we have to keep making cuts because, you know, our leadership just keeps telling us that we can't grow financially. And, you know, as Jean Lee said for the past two years, you know, that just puts us on a course of becoming soon to become dead towns, right? If if we can't afford, we can't figure out ways to bring in more revenue, right? That we're going to have to keep making these these cuts and there's no place to cut. Excuse me. Every year I watch more school committee members come in and say, oh, I'm going to help balance the budget. When they actually find out what the budget really looks like, they realize there's no room to cut. Right? And I hear the same thing from all the town boards as well. You know, but the town boards keep saying, well, we just need to cut their budget because we can't afford any more overrides, right? And there's no talk about actually what they're doing to grow the towns. There's plenty of talk of what we want to do to grow our schools, right? And that's where we're sitting here arguing. Right? Where we're sitting here arguing that because we have to get rid of teachers to actually put in administrators that we know we need. Because we have to keep our budget to this, at this unattainable level because we can't bring in more revenue as a town. Right? I don't like this budget. But I'm not going to see this budget fail. I don't like this budget because I don't like having to give up teachers to try and get in resources to benefit our tier one and tier two supports. That's cutting off your nose despite your face. It like it it's moving, it's moving backwards to move forwards. Right? I don't like that. Right? It it's absolute nonsense to me. But it is what it is. And, you know, this is one of those times where I'm after supports of them I really don't like. Excuse me, we should be talking about hiring, you know, probably five new counselors of some sort to be addressing the social emotional needs of our students as they come back in September. We should be talking about enriching our curriculum. Right? To earmark plans to make up the gaps that we know are going to exist by students who have had a really hard time the past year because we know they're going to be there. You know, instead, we're looking at how we can cut these people to bring in these people because we know we need these people. Unfortunately, we need these too. You know, and that's the reality we live in right now with this idea that the only way we're going to survive is by making cuts. Right? That there's, there's nothing left. There's, there's nothing left to cut. Excuse me. Personally, I think the idea of needing a communications director is silly in a district this size. I mean, I come from a communications background. But if we can't actively and effectively communicate with our parents and our staff in a district this size, right, that that's on, that's on us as district leaders. Right? And that's money that should be spent someplace else. I'm not going to sit here and, you know, hold up a already five hour meeting right over a $70,000 position, but I guarantee you in two years that position will be gone. Because it's, there's got to be better ways to spend it. You know, I will say this again next week in front of the joint committee. Right? This can't keep going on. We we all know what our tax rates are, but we also realize the value of our homes right is directly related to the quality of this district. So we're going to be in a lot of trouble if we keep making these cuts and this district isn't seen at the same high level. And we had the value of the homes end up falling because then we need to increase tax revenue just to break even. So that's where I stand.
Michelle, you're on mute, but I wonder if you, but I wonder if you were talking to me.
Yes, I said data, thank you. So thanks, David, for his comments.
So I guess I want to I want to say a little bit of what Julia said and a little bit of what David said. So I am in support of this plan. I have spent a lot of time, as I know Julia said, I've spent some, Vinnie has been awesome. I can't imagine if you're spending that much time with each one of us that I don't know how you have that much time a day to go through and to understand the budget. I've also talked to Mary Beth a lot about. Well, I want to back up a little bit and say, you know, my understanding, I wasn't on the committee, but my understanding from looking back and talking to people is that Dr. Harvey identified literacy and as a significant area of concern in our district several years ago. When we had our interim superintendent, Dr. Kuchenberger, identified that as an area that really needed to be addressed and needed to be, you know, systemically in our district. Mary Beth Banyos was hired in part, again, I wasn't on the committee, but in part because she has a background in curriculum and literacy. And she has identified the same thing that the previous two superintendents have told us is going on. And she has offered us her professional opinion that, and she, I think she was pretty blunt about it, that there are budgetary issues. I think this gets to what David was just saying that like my understanding is like, yeah, if there were no budget restrictions, this plan would look different. But I have pushed back and done a lot of the things that we've done here and asked a lot of questions of Mary Beth. And I really believe we need to have a system change and the system needs to have some curriculum leaders, we need that. And that's, you know, so I and to echo what Julia said, I am in support, I know I'm jumping around a little bit, I'm in support of that family engagement person. I make, like Julia, I'm excited to see what that person can do. I think we need that in our district. We need cultural change in our district and in our community. And I think that that is a step towards creating a positive cultural change. I also, sadly, I think David might be right, that in a few years, that just that job will be on the chopping block because I see our district as if we have to cut every single year. I I I think that that's, you know, because eventually you're going to get to a point where there's just nothing left and I feel like we're there. And I think that that's, you know, I think that we do need to make these changes that are to restructure, to make, to have some structure in place so that we can get moving towards or create a positive potential structure towards a better towards a better vision of delivering this because I think it's what the kids need. I think it's the right thing for the kids. So I guess I am in support of this budget. My honest answer is that I I see it, I see the reality, but like I, when I work with clients, I ask them to really outline what they really need. And like, in all honesty, this budget should be higher. And I understand that we had to comply with the towns and that's, it does have to get passed, and so I think it's where it needs to be.
Yeah, so I just would like to say that this year, you know, like you have Mary Beth like swinging in here with no budget and then the budget gets passed and then we're swinging into all of these changes. And one of the things that's been steady and very people brought this up is our assistant superintendent is always there. He is a person who says, how do we get to yes and not, ah, that's a problem, not, you know? So we want to really recognize that contribution. And that I know that when he's been asked to come up with ideas around how we would do various financial things, he always comes up with the ideas and and just tells us like it is what it's going to cost. So I appreciate that. I want to say that I think this budget is forward thinking. I appreciate that next year is going to be a tough year because you're going to have all of these learning gaps. And because of that, I think it's going to be critical that we have a structure in place that's going to have people focusing on just literacy at the early elementary levels and just focusing on the curriculum. I'm confident that this budget meets the needs of the towns, if it doesn't meet the needs of the district. And that this year, that's kind of important because last year we really asked the towns to stretch. And so now it's our turn to stretch a little and kind of just do what we can. I want to recognize that Mary Beth came in, you know, it's a new district. She looked at the district, she saw that we didn't have this multi-tiered systems of support really, and we didn't really have a strong literacy program. Something that honestly, when I was in, my kids were in elementary school, we talked about it then. And so we haven't really been able to figure out a way to address it. So I think we should try and continue to improve by having some people who are just kind of in charge and overlooking it, doing the, I see the coaches as people who are there to support teachers in collecting data, analyzing data, getting the information, all of the stuff that teachers should do, but they just are overwhelmed and can't do, especially we have our teachers this year who are going to learn about how to teach with trauma. There's 40 of them out there. Our teachers are going to be our frontline defense in dealing with all of those traumatic issues. And so we need to support them with these additional people in their buildings. And I look forward to next year seeing reports on how these are, you know, what's going on, how things are being built, you know, and over the next three years or so, seeing how it really works. I appreciate that it's going to be difficult for those teachers who are changing positions. And to you, I would say that this year I was asked to do two totally different positions. And it's been difficult and hard, but it's made me a better person and a better teacher. And I hope that at the end of next year, you reflect back and say, wow, that was hard, but I'm glad I did it. So I will wholly support this budget all the way through the town meeting. Are there any last questions or are people ready to vote? Peter?
You probably noticed I raised my hand a while ago, but it was to exactly say what you said about the central office folks. I honestly believe that the the central office folks are being abused right now, the amount of time that they are spending. I think it's taking a toll on family life to be there 15 hours a day. I think that's unfair to them. So I wanted to recognize you know, to say that we, to recognize that in their efforts. I think, I think what we're doing to them is criminal. You just said data collection and the first thing I thought of, learning management system creates a baseball card statistic sheet for every student. It's, that's what learning management systems do. They 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 look at data for every student, compare every student, every cohort, every grade, every teacher to see how to identify learning gaps. I don't know how many times I can say this, but again, I'm just going to say what I said before, there's a glaring contradiction between this budget and the previous vote to get back to school because what we're putting them back into is doesn't meet their needs. So, thank you.
So Michelle, you turned off your camera, so now you're in the bottom corner. So I'm going to go ahead and vote. So we have a motion that is to.
Yeah, Anna has her hand up.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that. Okay.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to sort of have one final thought just to, it's not really so much of a question, just an observation that something David said got me thinking, and I've been thinking for a minute about like the right ways to put it. But I do think the problem of the revenue issue and the increasing needs and demands of our district on the students and the teachers, I mean, we sort of have like water levels that are going in the wrong direction. So I think what David said is really right, you know, and Dana too, that fundamentally, our district has some major needs. I think it is worth noting that literacy is clearly a theme. And I actually wouldn't disagree with that. Clearly, that's a problem. And I do think, Mary Beth, the examples you showed of other districts, of all of the positions that you have proposed, that restoration of the curriculum director seems, does seem obvious. I, that's the one part of it that probably I, that's the one part of it that probably. I could sort of get behind the most. It's the, it's the coaches and the teachers, the other part that I'm really struggling with. But I think one thing, it's kind of thinking through my mind as we talk about this is. We've had three superintendents say, wow, this is sort of a problem. In the middle of that, we've had this significant turnover with Dr. Harvey leaving, Dr. Kuchenberger coming in, short term. Now we've got Superintendent Banyos here. Then we've had the pandemic. All of these things, I keep coming back to the idea that I don't think anyone in this committee would disagree that we've been through a lot. And that we have needs. I would even agree that we have needs. My biggest holdup on this is recognizing in this moment, if we're going to make these kinds of changes, I want to see the teachers support it more. And that to me is like a, of a cardinal tell of like, I think we need to change in literacy. And I think it should be something that teachers support. So that remains a problem. The other thing too, I was just sort of trying to put my mind back on. I think the first budget hearing, we had a couple of people with mental health background talk about sort of readiness to learn, right? And that here, and Peter put it well, that we're worried about where the kids actually are, social, emotional health, academic wounds, intellectual, emotional wounds. If kids are coming in that state. No amount of instruction is going to help get them over that. So I, I just think. I mean, I know that I'm, I, I can tell the way the boat's going to go, but I felt like I wanted to get this on the record that in this moment, at this time, the number one thing is to restore some semblance of normalcy to our students and our families. I think this is not the year to do these kinds of switches. I'm not saying that they're not necessary in some way, but I would rather have a plan that the teachers support, that the families have some power to think of. And I do strongly think that that family engagement position, a lot of that is all of our jobs. A lot of that is Mary Beth's job. It is. And if we're going to talk about adding a central office community position, I would have much preferred a DEI officer in a couple of years, when we get to the point where we can actually fund it. I think that that position is a weird catchall. I'm thinking about that job description that was social media manager, special education advocate. Buffer between the administration and the community, like it was a mashup of a weird kind. That's, that's not a, that's not a position that has legs to live. That is a weird ad hoc throw together, make it live. And I just. Of all years, that seems like a terrible thing to spend money on. I think David's right. That position is going to be as easily as we're trying to add it, it's going to go away. And if I was going to add some sort of engagement position, I would make it much more explicitly about equity and diversity in this district, which we know is a gaping hole. But even I would not do it this year. I just don't think that's the place to put our money right now. So. I know I'm the dissenter. I don't mind being the dissenter, but I had to get those things out that. I don't know that the community or the teachers, the teachers clearly don't support it. I don't know how the community feels about it. I think we will find out at town meeting. But I don't, I think this is the wrong step for us at this moment in time. So.
I would really like to vote. Is there anybody who's not ready to vote? Great. All right, David, you turned off your camera. So you moved to the bottoms of the screen. So you get to vote first. Yeah.
I vote yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Peter?
No.
No?
Yes.
Yes.
Anna?
No.
Bill Bailey, yes. So that is five yeses and two nos. A budget vote needs to pass by a two thirds majority. So that does pass. Vinnie?
There's one more motion, just so you know.
Yep, because we have to do the allocation of the debt. Yeah.
Okay.
Hold on, sorry.
Nope. Who's going to give it full screen? That'd be fancy.
There it is.
All right. I move that the Hamilton One Regional School Committee vote to assess the towns of Hamilton and Wannam a combined total of thirty-three million three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars as the amount necessary to operate and maintain the district. As well as paid debt service for FY twenty-two. The district's assistant superintendent shall determine the amount apportioned to each town. And the district's treasurer shall certify such amounts to the respective treasurers of each town.
There are second.
Second.
Second, but great. So basically, this motion is just to take the budget that we approved, divide it up, tell the towns what it is that we would like for them to support. I personally don't think we need to discuss this. Great. I don't see anybody banging down the doors to talk about it. Peter?
Sorry, I just wanted to. Say that the person David described earlier was me when I joined the school committee. And I thought, okay, let's, let's create an innovative district, let's streamline the budget, let's be more effective with less money. But then I got on the school committee and I realized we do not have a budget spending problem. We have a revenue problem. And it's put our, our towns in a death spiral. Even at, even at level services, we're, we're close to overrides or going into overrides. And people just aren't going to approve that, which means we're going to lose programs. Which means people are going to not want to be in this town with high taxes and limited programs. Businesses are going to avoid us and property taxes will fall, property taxes, and property values will fall. Taxes will go up. I'm afraid we're already in the death spiral and unless we solve this revenue problem. Folks, it's just going to get worse. Thank you for letting me.
Julia turned her camera off, so we'll start at the top of the circle to vote. Anna?
I'm still a no on principle.
Dana? Yes. Peter?
Uh, no.
Michelle?
Yes.
Yes.
And Julia?
Yes.
And Michelle, yes. Okay, the next items of business relate to policy. We previously had a weapons policy brought once in, I believe twice, but there's been some changes made. So we're going to vote potentially to approve that. Then there's an executive sessions policy, which I'm going to admit, I didn't read it. I'm sorry. Uh, school sponsored field trips, which when I went to look at it, the exhibit wasn't there. Did that get added eventually?
Uh, I think it got added on Monday afternoon. I got it from Dorothy.
I'm going to admit that I did not read that also. And a first reading of community resources speakers. So we'll take it away.
Can I just say, do, do we have to talk about this tonight?
We do not.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I push an eleven o'clock. I have a few hours of grading to do.
I would be fine with skipping that.
I don't know. I don't, I don't want to speak for the whole board. I'm just suggesting that. That it's late, but I, I know. And I did a lot of work to get ready for it, so. I don't know. Maybe we can just do this part and skip the rest. I don't know.
Well.
I just want to get a sense of the committee, I guess.
I would prefer to pass over it because I did not get a chance to read that one. So.
Do we have to vote? I mean, I'd prefer it to, but.
All right. I think we'll pass over that. We'll put policy on for our next meeting. So I'll just remind myself to put that on. Okay.
Do we need to, do we need to vote? Do we need to have like a consensus? I don't know what we need to do.
If there's a, if there's people who want to say, let's do it, then I'll consider it, but it doesn't look like it. So, okay, great.
Time pressing.
No, it's not time pressing. Okay. Piece of business is me, school committee protocols. Can we talk about this at our workshop next week? I just feel like this is going to be a little bit. Okay, so we'll do this in the workshop. Which leads to the next part. The workshop is going to be next week. Probably starting at seven, but just. We're still working on a few more details. There's some things going on with Dorothy's schedule. Um, David, you said something about a joint meeting. There's not a joint meeting. I just wanted to verify that, but we're.
I got my meetings.
Yeah, okay. So there's going to be the workshop. It's on the seventeenth. It's going to be at the high school. Um, we're going to be on. Michelle, do you know something different?
No, no, I just wanted to add something to Dorothy's thing and I can wait till the end.
It's going to be on this, we're, we'll be on the stage and the public can come. Audience, um, but there won't be any public comment because it's actually a workshop. And the other thing we'll be doing that night is Superintendent Banyos will put together her whatever evidence documents, what do you call those things?
Yeah, just to be like. Artifacts, where we are to date in the formative, just giving an update to the committee. Yes. I'll have some artifacts with me.
Yep, so to put together those artifacts and we'll discuss those. Anna?
Um, artifacts to me for the formative assessment?
Yes.
Okay, um, I just want to make a note that when we approved the calendar, we voted on seven. So like, I have very, I have very religiously protected the seven o'clock start, but I would, if we can hold to that, uh, I would really appreciate that.
Well, it's been discussed that it's a high holy day for some people, so I'm happy to stick with seven if you guys are good with that.
On the Saint, on Saint Patrick's Day?
Yeah.
Yeah, seven PM is fine.
All right. So we will be happy to stick with that. But just remember.
Thank you.
At the high school, it's a workshop. There's no public comment. Um, and it will be, if people want to attend, they are going to be welcome to sit in the Farini auditorium.
And can I just add though, Dorothy will be zooming in because she has a tight schedule. So she probably will not come in until five after seven, ten after seven. And she has asked that, um, there'll be an exhibit linked, which is the formative, which is the superintendent's evaluation. Um, on page nine, there's two paragraphs that she would like us to review because that's what she'll be talking about. Um, and she'll have a really tight schedule. So she's hoping to be with us for twenty minutes because then she has to jump off and go to a seven thirty meeting.
And she, she said something about inviting you to pre-send your questions. So she'll answer that. So you have them.
Yes, and, and the exhibit will be linked to the agenda.
Not pre-answer them, but you know what I mean? She'll be prepared to address them during the training so that we don't lose time. All right. Superintendent Banyos has only one thing to cover now, I guess.
Yeah, and I'll make it super fast. Just a reminder to the committee and the community that last day to submit nomination papers is March ninth eighteenth, no later than five PM. So anybody that's interested in doing that needs to be sure that they're into central office by that date and time.
And then number eight, we don't really need to cover, um, because we've gotten updates related to that in this meeting. We have consent agenda, which is to approve the minutes of February third. Does anybody want to hold those? Great. Then we'll take a motion to approve this consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. And no changes may be made.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle Horgan. Julia?
Yes.
Yes.
So?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bill Bailey, yes. Okay, topics for future meetings. Um, we've got David, I just wanted to ask you on your thing. Do you feel that that timeline thing is still necessary or no? I wasn't sure.
I'm going to say no, only because I think we should be moving forward. What Michelle's referring to is I had requested the leadership team provide a timeline of our plan and implementations since August. To really spread out to the community, but I really think in the interest of moving forward that they have better ways to spend their time at this point.
And then I have doing a land acknowledgement, which and like I told you, I was going to call Gary. I remember during the meeting and I wrote it right here on the window for tomorrow.
Michelle, can I, can I say something on that one?
I'm just listing them out, what they are. And the other one I've got for future is a mascot change. And then just in general, in the future, we've got probably towards the summer, just, well, in our whole goals discussion, how are we going to integrate the um, equity piece into our goals. But for the next meeting, I don't have anything specific.
So. Anna? What, what I wanted to say about the land acknowledgement is that, um, that is, that is an independent topic that has nothing to do with what either town does or does not choose to do with it. For the rest of the committee, this is something I voiced in December and then have been working on with a high school student. We've prepared a presentation. The presentation is now ready to go. Um, and I would argue that, Michelle, it is not your purview to decide that you need to talk to Gary about it, to decide if it goes on our agenda. I've requested it. The student is prepared. We can consider it independent of any other body. So I don't understand why we would need to consult with someone before we schedule it onto our agenda.
I'm trying to be collaborative.
It has nothing to do with what the towns do or do not choose to do. It's a proposal for the school committee. There's a similar proposal to the towns, but they are not related. And it is not your independent decision to decide what does or does not go on our agenda.
You can put it on, but I would invite the towns to come and speak.
Okay, I, again, it has, without, without you having seen the agenda, it, the pre, presentation. Maybe after the presentation, what I'm saying will make more sense. This is an action that any body, not, not body like human, like any legislative municipal, school, social, club, any, any group, there's the word I'm looking for. Any group can consider independent of one another. They're not interrelated. So this is the presentation of that request to the school committee. Just for us, because there's a part that's just for us.
Michelle?
Can, um, the next meeting, um, we asked the school committee to give guidance to the policy committee, subcommittee, to look into revise or create, um, meeting length, um, how long our meetings are. And if we should have some policies in place to, you know, maybe after three hours, you know, take a revote to see if we should continue.
Okay. And Dana, did I see your hand up just a second ago?
You did, but then I now understand we were only really talking about next meeting. So I'm good.
Well, or the meeting after.
Uh, no, I just, I just want to make sure we follow and I, I trust that we will, we follow. We had made those about when we're going to talk about our definition of equity and when, uh, you know, and I know we have those penciled in. I just want to make sure that those are on and, but those are not for the next, those are in April and then, yeah, so I just want to make sure.
Okay, and, and to be clear, Michelle, I don't know that the land acknowledgement should be at the workshop, but whatever the next meeting is after that.
Right. Our next meeting is not the workshop. That's a workshop.
Yeah.
Um, the next meeting is. You can't remember the details.
It's April seventh, but I'll confirm that right now.
Yeah, but I Okay, that is true, but I just, I can't remember. There's something about that's coming up about the last. All right, whatever it is, whatever it is, it's not important because I can't remember it because I would remember it. All right, so we're.
But I, I actually have a question that Paul should ask earlier. It, it actually concerns the workshop in. You know, what the agenda is, why we're at the meeting at the high school gym or auditorium.
For, we had always intended for those to be in person. We had some difficulty with that through the pandemic. And also then we had some difficulty with, now we can't meet a Bueller because it's being used as a classroom. And it's a lot to like, it would be a lot to take down a whole classroom for us to meet. And so we, um, we're looking for a place that was big enough that could accommodate us and also, um, if people wanted to attend. And that's, that, that is a place that is currently open. So.
Okay, is this, uh, that, is this workshop in conjunction with the letter received earlier from?
So I don't, my answer to that is I don't know, David. Because I turned that over to Naomi and I don't know if that's what she's.
Okay. So this is a workshop basically be facilitated by Dorothy?
So it, it, so I, I've been trying to get in touch with Naomi to find out if she's going to be able to schedule this at, for that time. I don't know if she can. If she can, then we will be. If she can't, then we're going to discuss. Mary Beth's assessment and we're going to. Mary Beth's assessment and we're gonna discuss a strategic plan. If.
And our protocols, right?
And our protocols, because that's now on those. If. That email. Is an indication that that's what Naomi is scheduled, then that's what we'll do, but I don't. I honestly don't know the answer to that, I turned it over to Naomi and Dorothy to. Organize because it was directed at me and I wanted to resolve it.
Okay, I, I just didn't see an agenda, I just want to.
Yeah, and I didn't.
Some idea what I was walking into.
Yeah, I didn't want, I didn't think it was fair for me to direct that, so I turned it over to someone else, so.
Okay.
So we'll be able to prepare. There'll be exhibits or, I don't know.
I hope, there definitely will be exhibits from Dorothy. I'm gonna, I was gonna, I got that email like you guys did, like just.
Sure, sure.
So I was gonna email Naomi back and say like, what's the timetable for this? Um, because I, because it was unclear.
Alright, so we'll hope for the best.
Cross our fingers, like, and you know how it goes, like I said, I turned it over to her, I have. I turned it over to her, so, um. Is this about the next meeting, Anna, or?
No, no, it's, it's about that, I would just say, based on what she described, I can't imagine that all of what she's proposing would have been completed by the seventeenth.
I, yeah, I don't think so.
I don't think that's, I don't, I, I would, I would be shocked if that were to happen that way, so.
Dana?
This is just a calendar question, I don't know why, but I have in my calendar penciled out with question marks the twenty-fourth, so we don't. That. That may have been at some point, but we don't have anything on the twenty-fourth, correct?
We had been planning to have a meeting before the town meeting.
Yeah.
But.
Making sure.
But, because we thought we were gonna need to strategize and things like that, but we, it doesn't appear we're gonna need to. But, I wouldn't un, I wouldn't erase it because it couldn't be the time when Naomi is intending to do whatever. It is she's planning to do.
Well, then maybe all of you should enter in your calendar like I have it with like seven question marks and then, you know.
Yeah, so that's just that, so, okay. Alright, super. And I'm gonna see if someone will make a motion to adjourn, because it's eleven o'clock and.
So moved.
Okay. I'm gonna say that David seconded it.
Seconded, and I'm David to yes.
Okay, and Julia?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
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 Anna?
Yes.
Bill Bailey, yes, that's it, you can put your hands in like this. And then we can go team.